We'll call the meeting to order for the afternoon of November 29, 2022. Tony, would you please call the roll?
Jimenez?
Present.
Corales?
Here.
Cohen? Carrasco?
Here.
Davis?
Here.
Esparza?
Here.
Arenas?
Here.
Foley?
Here.
Mahan?
Here.
Jones?
Present.
Liccardo?
Present.
Thank you.
All right. If you're able to stand, please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. All right. Today's invocation will be provided by Pastor Irene Thompson, Pastor Cedric Sang, and Anquisha Crutcher, and Councilmember Mahan will tell us more, and I hope I didn't mispronounce anyone's name. Okay.
Great. Thanks, Mayor. I think that was pretty well done. Welcome Pastor Cedric Sang and Anquisha Crutcher from Cathedral of Faith Church. I want to thank you for joining us today to provide our invocation. Please feel free to come on up to the front here. After moving from Hong Kong to San Jose 23 years ago, Pastor Cedric Sang has served as the Communications Department Lead at the Cathedral of Faith for over 20 years. He has served in many capacities from youth services, worship music, college ministry, creative arts, midweek services, weddings, funerals, and more. He will be the voice of our performance today, joined by dancer Anquisha Crutcher beside him. Anquisha Crutcher is the Elementary Director at the Cathedral of Faith Kids Ministry. She is a native of Tennessee and has been dancing for over 20 years in different styles of dance, such as ballet, jazz, hip-hop, and more. She's been involved in many different theater and dance productions around the South and has been recognized for being the first female Athletic Coach of the Year in 2018 in her region. I would like to invite both Pastor Cedric and Anquisha to speak a few words into the mic before their performance.
Thank you, sir. On behalf of Pastor Ken and the Cathedral of Faith, we just want to say thank you to you all for your service. We wake up every day to a calling, and my prayer is that we would rise up each and every day to the work that God has called us to do. You're broken down and tired of living a life on a merry-go-round, and you can't find the fighter, but I see it in you, so we're gonna walk it out and move mountains. We're gonna walk it out, move mountains. And I'll rise up, rise like the day. I'll rise up, arise unafraid. I'll rise up, and I'll do it a thousand times again. And I'll rise up high like the waves. I'll rise up in spite of the ache. I'll rise up, I'll do it a thousand times again. For you, for you, for you, for you. When the silence isn't quiet, and it feels like it's getting hard to breathe, I know you feel like dying, but I promise we'll take the world to its feet and move mountains, bring it to its feet, move mountains. And I'll rise up, rise like the day. I'll rise up, arise unafraid. I'll rise up, and I'll do it a thousand times again. For you, for you, for you, for you. All we need, all we need is hope, and for that we have each other, and for that we have each other. Yeah, 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 yeah. We will rise, we will rise, and oh, we will rise with you, oh, God. Rise on your wings like eagles. And we'll rise up, rise like the days. We'll rise up in spite of the ache. We'll rise up, we'll rise a thousand times again. And we'll rise up high like the waves. I'll rise up in spite of the ache. I'll rise up, and we'll do it a thousand times again. And for you, for you, for you, for you. We need you, God, to rise, to rise up. We need you, oh, we will rise.
Thank you very much for sharing your talents and your ministry with us. That was beautiful. Thank you. All right. We have a few ceremonial items. So first, Councilmember Carrasco will join me at the podium. We're going to recognize and proclaim Native American Heritage Month. And I know we have a few friends here. Welcome, Pedro and Tamara.
Good afternoon, everybody. I hope you all enjoyed your break, and I hope that you're healthier than the Carrasco household. It's my honor to proclaim November as Native American Heritage Month. We recognize this month as a time to acknowledge the contributions and the diverse culture, the rich traditions, and the important histories of Native peoples. Native American Heritage Month also serves as an opportune time to educate and raise awareness about the unique challenges Native peoples faced, both historically and currently, and the ways in which our brothers and sisters have had to work in order to survive. This recognition is timely, given that we just celebrated Thanksgiving. For most of us, Thanksgiving was taught to us with depictions of pilgrims and colonizers sitting around a table, celebrating their great accomplishments and the fact that they survived, the Native Americans. We were taught to be grateful for the foundation of our country. We were never taught that this land was already inhabited by great men and great women. Rarely, if at all, we were told that there were civilizations rich in culture, religion, art, medicine, science, and an elaborate form of governance. Little credit is given to the various and incredible inventions, including corn, the staple of so many cuisines around the globe, selectively bred so that we can enjoy its versatility, or how the Iroquis took dried and greased bear gut and a bird quill to fashion baby bottles. Most incredible, how Native Americans created syringes from animal bladders and hollow bird bones to inject medication. As we know, this was a lifesaving tool that has served to eradicate diseases like polio, and of course, the most recent aid in the battle against COVID-19. We have had to depend on leaders from our own community, which I'm grateful are here with us today, but they've had to teach us of our forgotten ways. They've reconnected us to our ancestors, and they've even called out our unconscious Throughout our community, teachers, we've made sure we acknowledge our ancestors and the land we now stand on, and I'm proud of supporting as well our local events. This year, we celebrated the 24th Annual Mexica New Year festivities, the largest congregation in the world, at our beautiful Emma Push Park. We witnessed the incredible moment when the Muekma Aloney tribe did their ceremonial dance that had not been performed in over 150 years. And as a city, we're taking strides in recognizing the legacy of indigenous communities as we embedded a land recognition into our city charter. In a time where the mainstream has struggled to acknowledge that which is not mainstream, this proclamation and our actions serve to honor our Native peoples. We know that the Muekma Aloney and other Native groups were nearly annihilated to disease and to forced labor. Before the European contact, at least 300,000 Native people who spoke 135 distinct dialects lived in what is now California. This, per the Library of Congress. By 1848, that number had been halved. Just 25 years later, in 1873, only 30,000 remained, and now reports show that there are approximately 500 members left to the Muekma Aloney tribe. Here in San Jose, we stand on the unceded Native land of the Muekma Aloney, faithful stewards of the land, people who once lived in about 4.3 million acres in the Bay Area. But federal negligence and anthropologist A.L. Krober's 1925 assessment that Native Californians were, quote, "extinct for all practical purposes," end quote, led the federal government to first strip the Muekma Aloney of their land and then deny them federal recognition. This has dire consequences even 100 years later. We recognize their ancestral presence in this land we call home. The art and culture of Native peoples is mostly exhibited through the lens of the oppressor and in relation to the past, which strips it from its humanity. It's often suspended in history, divorced from contemporary relevance. I bring this proclamation forward to say that Native people are not on view for us, but instead, we are in conversation and in dialogue with them. Thank you all, and I want to thank especially Tamara and Pedro, Tamara Alvarado and Pedro Aquiwa Perez, who have been my mentors in this journey over the last eight years. Pedro Perez is a member and a dancer of a Kalpuli Donaleke Aztec dance, yeah, here in San Jose, and has been an Aztec dancer for over 15 years. He was born in Atollinga, Zacatecas, Mexico. His native heritage comes from the Cascan people in southern Zacatecas. He's a community organizer as well as the owner of a family-owned and operated small business, JP Paving and Grading, and again, I'm incredibly grateful for his presence and contribution to the city of San Jose. And we're also joined by Tamara Alvarado. Tamara serves as a program officer in the David and Lucille Packard Foundation, the local grant-making program, leading the cultural and civic investment in the vibrant communities' portfolio spanning the five Bay Area counties that program serves: San Mateo, Santa Clara, Santa Cruz, Monterey, and San Benito. The portfolio invests $4 million annually to advance creative, environmental, and civic organizations that connect people with art, nature, and their communities, creating a unique sense of place for all. What a perfect place for you. Tamara holds a bachelor's degree in Spanish literature with an emphasis in Chicano Studies from Stanford University. She has been a traditional Aztec dancer for over 20 years and is also a member of the Kalpuli Donaleke Aztec drum and dance. And I want to invite the mayor to present the proclamation and Tamara and Pedro to say a few words.
Thank you. Oh, okay. Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman Carrasco, and thank you, Mayor Liccardo, for this opportunity. And, you know, we'll be brief. Thank you so much for sharing a bit about the Muekma Aloney, and I'd like to also acknowledge the great work of the Muekma Aloney Tribal Council, their official name as the Muekma Aloney Tribe of the San Francisco Bay Area, and also thankful to Chairwoman Charlene Nishme for her leadership and her friendship with us and with Kalpuli Donaleke. Indeed, we did have, the first time in over 100 years, this past March, at Emma Push Park, our beloved park, ceremonial park, which is now a sacred space. Many years now, we've been there, and really allowing for us to work together to have the first-ever Cali Native Knights there, also another first in San Jose. So I wanted to share a little bit about that, and just wanted to share a little bit of research that Pedro Aquiwatina and I did on the National Native American Heritage Month, which, by the way, didn't just start happening. And this started as one of the proponents of then American Indian Day was by Dr. Arthur C. Parker, a Seneca Indian, who was at the time the director of the Museum of Arts and Science in Rochester, New York, and he actually persuaded the Boy Scouts of America to set aside a day for First Americans. This is, we're talking about early 1900s here. Then you also have the work to be done by Reverend Sherman Coolidge, an Arapaho Native, to call upon the country, working with elected officials then. So this was declared American Indian Day, second Saturday of each May. We're talking about 1915, and I'll skip to the end here. Basically, what we're looking at is, in 1990, President George H.W. Bush approved a joint resolution designating November National American Indian Heritage Month, and of course, as you know, as time goes on, we grow and we evolve, and we call things now Native American Heritage Month, and these have been issued nationally since 1994. So this is just to add a little bit of context that what we're doing today collectively is actually happening across our country and has already some history, although I think '94 is recent. So wanted to round that out, and also because I promised Pedro I would let him get at least a paragraph on the mic. It's my husband, by the way. He tolerates me, espóso.
Great. Thank you. I'm usually just the husband, and I just get to stand here, and she says, "Look pretty." I don't know about that. To round out our time here in formally proclaiming from our great city of San Jose National Native American Heritage Month, we also formally ask you, each of you, to think about how you can honor not only the local Native culture and communities, but those that are present in our city from across the Americas. We appreciate the opportunity, also as members and leaders of Kalpuli Donaleke, to invite you to the 25th Annual Aztec New Year Celebration in March, where we wear our own commitment to nurturing intertribal relationships can be seen, heard, and experienced.
So just so everybody knows, these are small bags of tobacco, and it is a formal way of saying thank you, but also of being in relationship, because when you ask, and we've made that request, right, how could you center Native communities in your work? And that's, you know, for the staff and those of us in the community and the elected officials here in the room. So that's what we're doing, okay? And it is worth less than $50. Way, way less.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for the gift. All right. Councilmember Foley is making her way down. We are going to proclaim and recognize World AIDS Day, and I think we may have some members of the community to join us.
Thank you, Mayor. Do I have my graphic coming up? No, not that one. But that's later, so hold on to that one. I want to give a shout out to my cousin Dan, who sent me this picture today, not knowing that I was going to do a proclamation in acknowledgement of World AIDS Awareness Day. So his presentation, or his photograph to me was timely. This is my brother Tim, and I'm going to tell you a little bit about this. Good afternoon. I'm Councilmember Pam Foley, and I represent District Nine. I'm honored to recognize this Thursday, December 1, as World AIDS Day. Beginning in 1988 and recognized annually on December 1, World AIDS Day is a global event to remember those who have lost their lives to AIDS-related illnesses and to honor and support those living and affected by HIV/AIDS. World AIDS Day unites people worldwide to show support for the more than 1.2 million people living with HIV/AIDS in the United States and the approximately 38 million people living with HIV/AIDS worldwide. This proclamation has deep, personal meaning to me. Many of you have heard this story again, but it's important to share again. 26 years ago, when I was pregnant with my daughter Caitlin, my brother Tim died of AIDS-related complications. Prior to his passing, I wrote him a letter attempting to give him the strength to live long enough to meet his niece. I was never able to send the letter, as he was sicker than I knew, and he passed away a day later. Sorry, it's a little emotional. Even 26 years later. Over the last three decades, there have been many advancements in drug treatments for HIV/AIDS that have reduced the transmission and acquisition of HIV/AIDS, transforming it for many into a manageable chronic condition. It makes me proud to see the remarkable progress that has been made, as Tim likely could have benefited from the treatment that allows so many to see near-normal lifespans. The City of San Jose recognizes the essential role of the advocates who continue to fight the HIV/AIDS epidemic, such as organizations, community health workers, and the Santa Clara County's World AIDS Day Committee. This Thursday, on World AIDS Day, the 34th year, Councilmember Raul Corales and I will be hosting multiple events at San Jose City Hall, open for all in the community to attend. as we honor and commemorate all those impacted by the disease. AIDS Memorial Quilts will be on display in the rotunda beginning at 10:00, and if you have not seen any of the AIDS quilts, please take advantage of this opportunity. They are moving, they're memorable, it's a tear-jerking experience that'll bring your Kleenex. Then we will have a flag-raising ceremony in the West Plaza at 1:00, followed by a candlelight vigil outside of the rotunda at 5:30. Please join us as we use this day to remember those that have been impacted by HIV/AIDS and recommit ourselves against the disease itself and against the stigma and discrimination that has been tied to it for far too long. Mayor Liccardo, will you please present this proclamation to the Santa Clara County World AIDS Day Committee? And Nicole, would you like to say a few words?
Thank you very much, Pam. You always hit all the points, and I'm left with almost nothing to say. My name's Nicole Toriano, I use she/her pronouns. I am part alongside multiple nonprofit organizations, community organizations, public health, Getting to Zero, the HIV Commission, as part of the Santa Clara County World AIDS Day Committee. Each year, World AIDS Day comes December 1st, and it is important that we don't forget. We don't forget where we came from. It wasn't too long ago that this disease, this pandemic, this epidemic was a death sentence for many, many in the LGBTQ+ community, and that death sentence was used to spread hate against the LGBTQ+ community. And, you know, it's not that far back, when we saw thousands upon thousands of our siblings pass away from this disease, where people didn't even want to speak about it. It was a hush-hush secret that you didn't want to talk about. But we've progressed a long way, but not far enough. That's why it's important that every day we highlight to this date, we commemorate those that we have lost, and we continue the fight against this disease. It is not just a queer disease, it's not just a gay disease, it's a worldwide disease. And as we saw the monkeypox come about this past year, and it wanted to, again, be labeled a gay disease, you saw people in our community mobilize. We weren't going to go back to the time of shame, and we weren't going to go back to spreading these lies and this hate and making it a gay disease, but we mobilized. We passed out vaccinations, and the community really stepped up at bars and community events. So it's things like this, it's lessons like this that have been learned and that we will continue to learn from, and why it is so important that we continue the fight against HIV and AIDS, that we will not quit until we get to zero. Zero new infections, zero new deaths, and zero transmittance. So, thank you, Pam Foley, thank you, Mayor Liccardo, and all the City Councilmember Peralas for always supporting the state. It's very important, not only to our community, but the community at large, so we appreciate it. Thank you.
I love you, Tim. Oh, he's gone. He's gone.
Thank you all, and thank you, Councilmember Foley, for credibly sharing your loss. We're joined now by Mario and Emma Ramirez, and they're making their way down, because Councilmember Jimenez has something to say about...
A few things to say.
Yeah, a few things to say. Yes, welcome.
Thank you, Noreen and Terry, if you want to come down as well. Although I know Terry likes cameras, so he may want to take a photo, but join us, please, because we're going to take a photo after. So, good afternoon. Today, I'm very honored to recognize two members of the District 2 community, and quite frankly, they're two of my favorite people. And you'll learn a little bit about why. I've seen them at many different places, some that I won't mention. But on any day of, any given day of the year, you can find photos of them traveling, spending time together, enjoying life with friends and family, and if you look closely, you can also find them dancing the night away at festivals. Again, I've seen them everywhere. And let me just tell, say this very publicly, is that I want to be like them when I grow up, and so I very much appreciate everything you do. But let me tell you why we're here, to celebrate and acknowledge the good work of Emma and Mario Ramirez. Emma and Mario have lived in the Coyote Creek Neighborhood Association in South San Jose for over 30 years. They raised their two sons, graduates of local high schools, who have gone forward to be amazing contributors like their parents within their own respective communities. Mario and Emma are a very rare, selfless couple that are always thinking about others. They're an outstanding example of what it means to be community leaders. And here are just a few, just a few examples of some of the stuff that they've done. Beautify SJ Anti-Graffiti and Litter Volunteers, Boy Scouts of America troop leader, Mario, Boy Scouts of America troop mom, Emma, recipients of the District 2 community beautification grants. They have held active roles with the Coyote Creek Neighborhood Association in various respects. One is the Mueca Heritage Project, Neighborhood Watch Block Captains, PRNS Adopt the Park and Trail Volunteers, Second Harvest Park Event Volunteers, and they also assisted with traffic safety projects. In addition to all that, they've also been parishioner volunteers at Christ the King Church. I know Mario has helped out the Santa Clara County Men's Recovery, served holiday feasts for the men there, Santa Clara County Veterans Color Guard, Mario, Southside Community Center, Senior Center Volunteers, volunteers at Sabor del Valle, as well as support fundraising events all across the city for various nonprofits. Mario, and let me just pause there. The reason I share all that, I think it's, sometimes we don't ourselves give ourselves enough credit, so I think it's important for you to hear just a snapshot of all the great work that you've been doing, because I think hearing it out loud and hearing it, you're like, "We really did all that." So I just wanted to say that that's why I listed it all off. So Mario and Emma are leaders deserving of acknowledgement and celebration for their achievements and impact. They have dedicated their time and skills to making their community a better place for all of us, and I know we have some District 2 residents here today, so I want you to join me in a little bit to give them a round of applause. But I'm honored to commend them today for their continued volunteerism, dedication to community service, and a positive impact on District 2, and really overall for being wonderful people, really, who epitomize being a public servant. So we want to congratulate you, and if you want to come up and say a few words, please? And let's give them a round of applause.
All right.
Anyway, thank you. Sergio's office is always hearing from me, so I want to thank him and Helen, Helen, because they always listen, and the mayor, so, but thank you very much. And we love living where we do, so we try to keep our area clean, that's why we volunteer. So, thank you again.
All right. Thank you. All right, finally, last but not least, Chris Patterson Simmons, are you here with us? Please come on down. There she is. All right. Councilmember Peralas will be describing Chris's great work on behalf of the community.
Thank you, Mayor. All right, today it is my pleasure to recognize and present Chris Patterson Simmons with this commendation as a thank you for everything she has done for our community and city. Chris was born in Galveston, Texas, and moved to California with her family when she was a young child. She's lived in San Jose since 2006, and in those 16 years, she has become an active community member, leader, and business owner that has dedicated countless hours to bettering our city. Chris is the successful owner of New to You Thrift Boutique, along with Urban Kiosk located in downtown San Jose, both aimed at activating the East Santa Clara Street corridor. In 2016, Chris became the first African-American woman to serve as the president of the East Santa Clara Street Business Association, where she has helped to lead events, activations, and the monthly meetings that support and help to promote the many small businesses that exist along East Santa Clara Street. Along with serving as the president of the association, she has also served on the Greater Downtown San Jose Economic Recovery Task Force, Small Business Focus Group, and the Parking and Transportation Demand Management Committee. Having known and worked with Chris for nearly a decade now, I can personally speak to her commitment in making our city a better place, not just for her family and newborn grandson, which I know she's very proud about, but for all the families and residents here today. There are not many community leaders like Chris, and it has been a true pleasure working with you throughout these years, Chris. And now I, along with my council colleagues, would like to present this commendation to Chris Patterson Simmons for her many years of service and dedication to our city, and I'll invite her to say a few words. Thank you.
First giving honor to God. Raul's like a little brother to me. This is just wonderful. I know this will probably be my last hurrah here unless I get to know our new mayor coming in. But I'm not going to stop the fight that I have started a long time ago with making things better in our corridor, which is about beautification, safety, equality, so I'm going to have to just keep it going for Raul, because he's going to be gone now, and, but he's not going to be gone out of our city, he's still the...
Police officer?
Yeah, I got to support our officers also continually, continually. I want to actually turn the baton over to another person in leadership as president, but no one has stepped up. I'm not supposed to be the president this long. I want to see another female in leadership, you know, it's only fair, and to continue to teach our business owners our resources and what's important in our community, so they'll know what to do, so they're not frustrated. In short, a lot of people, they think they have to call the police for homeless situations or people just sitting around, or vagrants, that's not, that's not what it's about. So what the Advocacy Association has done is to share people their resources on what to do, who to call, so you're not inundating the police with things that are just not that important, because sometimes we're, we have as much power as the police, and so in sharing this, we got to really teach each other our power, our ability to take the reins and do what we need to do, and not have to always rely on the police officers as well. They're there for us, true, but we have the same amount of power to get things done if we stand together. So again, I want to thank you, Raul, for everything you've done. Sam, it's been a joy for eight years, and I'm going to continue the fight, and I appreciate this honor. Thank you.
All right, we are blessed to live in this community. All right. Thank you to all the members of the community who came to receive commendations. We'll move on now to the orders of the day. I know there are a few items, let's see here, to be added. We have a new item, 2.2, Request for Travel and Excused Absence, I'm sorry, 2.20, and 3.4, Boards and Commissions Appointments, which would be added under the Orders of the Day if 2/3 of this council agrees. And if there are any other changes, we'll go to those first before I go to Councilmember Foley. Let me just see if anyone had any other changes to the Orders of the Day. Okay, I don't. I know Councilmember Foley would like to adjourn today's meeting in memory of Donna Jewett, who passed away on September 23rd. Yes? Absolutely.
Greetings are usually something that I would do sitting at the dais, but I felt it was really important to bring forward Mr. George Jewett and Police Chief Mata, and I'll tell you why, as it relates to Donna Jewett. I'm honored today to recognize the life of Donna Jewett, who passed away on September 23rd, 2022. Donna Ferraro Jewett was a California native, born in Merced, and lived in District 9 for most of her adult life. Donna was one of a kind and a first in many areas. She was a trailblazer as one of the first female San Jose Police Department officers. This was a time when female officers were required to wear skirts and heels. Can you imagine wearing heels and a skirt while conducting police business? Chief, can you? After a few, after a few years in active duty, she moved to the Central Identification Unit. There she became the first female supervisor for this unit and was a lead on many investigations using fingerprinting analysis. Thank you to Police Chief Mata for being present today to show respect for this phenomenal woman. She was also the first female president of the California State Division International Association for Identification. She served on the Federated Retirement Board for many years, for the city's retirement board for many years, and the first female president of the San Jose Willow Glen Lions Club. She was an inspiring woman and leader. She was active in the Lions Club and at St. Francis Episcopal Church, where I came to know her and her husband George nearly 30 years, nearly 20 years ago. Donna's greatest joys was, though, her family. George, her husband of 40 years, who joins us in chambers today, her children Jim, May, and Paula, Kathy, and Art, and Dave, and Tish, her nine grandchildren, and her five great-grandchildren. Donna also deeply loved her in-laws, Mac and Geneva Tinker. And on a personal level, Donna and George offered me guidance and support throughout the past 20 years. When I needed a knee replacement, Donna recommended her surgeon, and I am grateful she did. Because of her recommendation, I can move in a pain-free way. I will always think of her as I walk down the hallway and someday even run down the hallway because of my new knee. I'm grateful to Donna for her service to our city and our greater community. I am blessed to call her my friend and honored to adjourn this meeting in her name. Thank you.
All right, on Orders of the Day, then, let's vote. I believe, wait, I think we have members of the public with their hands up?
Yes.
We'll take comment only on Orders of the Day.
Yes, so this is on the addition of an item, Galaxy A13-5G. Yes, so this is on the addition of an item, Galaxy A13 5G. Galaxy A13 5G, press star six to unmute. I'm gonna move on to Blair Beekman.
Hi, Blair Beekman here. I was having a bit of trouble hearing Tony's voice. I hope my voice is coming through okay. It's not my end. I just wanted to thank you for offering public comment on, on adjustments to the agenda today and the addition of an additional item. I don't quite know what that item is yet. I would like to look it up. And just a reminder in the importance that once an item is, is announced within the public meeting agenda, it does have a right for public comment on each item. I hope that's an issue. We can talk about more in the coming years of San Jose. Thank you.
We're gonna try Galaxy again. And moving back to, going back to council.
All right. Then, council, I don't believe we have a motion, do we?
So moved.
All right, let's vote on that motion.
Jimenez?
Aye.
Corales?
Yes.
Cohen?
Aye.
Roscoe?
Aye.
Davis?
Yes.
Asparza?
Yes.
Arenas?
Yes.
Foley?
Aye.
Mahan?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Licardo?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, we're on to the closed session report. Nora?
Thank you, Mayor. We do not have a report out of closed session today.
Thank you. On the consent calendar, are there any items that the council would like to pull? I'm not seeing any hands, virtually. So we will go to public comment on the entire consent agenda?
Sorry, I was checking on a different item. Paul Soto?
Yes, good afternoon, council. Paul Soto from the horseshoe. These acknowledgements are mocked. Native American Day heritage and the acknowledgement on a city level is mocked? When you're putting land issues on the consent calendar, Native American history is simply about land. That's all it is, land takeovers. Okay, so you, this city mocks its acknowledgement in, in this really high-minded principled position that it takes in acknowledging Native American history, but yet you will put items on this consent calendar that have absolute issue on July 14th of 1846. So until we get to a point as a city, okay, to where we can start talking about these land issues and not running them all the way through the consent calendar, namely specifically is the one that has to do with deferring the taxes on the downtown high rises. I want that money, and I want it now, because if there ever was a time when we needed those $60 from these billionaires, we need it right now, okay? In the month of December last year, five people died of exposure. That was on their, that was on their death certificates, exposure, five of them, okay? By which afterwards, this mayor and this council assume full responsibility for that and that the people that are out there, it is not their responsibility, but it was the failures of this council's housing policies that created that situation. So we need the money, okay? Billionaires can do without. They got that money in their ashtray. So when we're talking about land use and we're talking about American Heritage Month and Native American Month, we don't want your lip service. Give us back our land. That's what we want. We don't want your lip service. We want the land. Thank you.
Blair?
Hi, Blair Beekman. Brian, 2.11, and the many positives. Our soon previous mayor, Licardo, has helped try to build. San Jose City Government is still not very good and needs to better learn how to more openly speak to the public meeting space, in public meeting spaces, about all of the surveillance tech and data collection uses and capabilities with smart street light technology, new broadband, 5G, and electronic billboards. And where all of this data is then being taken to once it leaves our well-intentioned local sanctuary city and civil protection policies. Berkeley Local Government and its everyday community in the past year have proven that we still can work together, that we can all work together and that we can all ask for and work towards continual good adjustments of better and better community civil protections and accountability with local law enforcement surveillance tech and local commercial data collection. Community civil protections openness and accountability practices is a subject matter that we should not have to fear to more openly discuss, to honestly ask yourselves, why are we currently afraid to? With these questions in mind, Brian, 2.11, do we really need four or five versions of the same surveillance and data collection technology in a local neighborhood area? When one piece of technology can do the exact same work and cover about as much territory in a local neighborhood? I am hoping that already well-established minimum use and deployment practices can connect with the common sense practicalities the mayor-elect currently tries to speak of or likes to speak of. And I am hoping that all parts of the San Jose community will want to continue to add to a maturing dialogue that seems to be taking place between everyday community and city government staff and in how to better address a number of local issues at this time. I'm hopeful how this current evolution of shared good practices and dialogue, and that can also include this public comment, can continue into the next mayoral administration. Thank you.
Back to the council.
All right, on the consent calendar, we need a motion, I believe.
Move approval.
Second.
Let's vote.
Jimenez?
Aye.
Corales?
Yes.
Cohen?
Aye.
Roscoe?
Aye.
Davis?
Yes.
Asparza?
Yes.
Arenas?
Yes.
Foley?
Aye.
Mahan?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Licardo?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, we have the Land Use Consent Agenda up next, 10.1A and B. These are designations of city landmarks and historic property. Would anyone like to pull an item off the Land Use Consent Calendar? Not seeing any hands. Let's take a public comment on that item.
Paul Soto?
Yes, Paul Soto from the horseshoe. I think I know a bit about establishing historical landmarks in this city, considering Sacred Heart Church, Cesar Chavez's home, the original headquarters of Low Rider Magazine on 282 Willow Street, which happens to be only just across the street from Sacred Heart Church. Both those and the second headquarters of Low Rider Magazine got established into this San Jose Historical Inventory, which is the precursor to becoming historical landmarks. Okay, so this is the work that I'm doing, the legitimate work as a citizen, as a Chicano, inside this city. Because for too long, city has neglected, it has neglected with context of landmarks, the Chicano history. And I'm saying Chicano, not the immigrant, not the immigrant history, the Chicano movement history, okay? And so when we're talking about historical landmarks, I don't have the money to buy a building. I do have the history and knowledge to establish the history that went on in these buildings. And that's how we're taking the land back. And we're gonna continue taking the land back until this city comes to a point where it is able to deal with us as equals. Because why should I have to fight the citizen? As a Native American, as a Chicano, why is it that we have to fight for something that is constitutionally guaranteed, which is due process of law and equal protection under the law? Why is it that the Chicano has to continue to fight for something that is constitutionally guaranteed? The city has to ask itself that question. I don't. I don't, because I have no delusions about what it is that I have a right to. I know exactly what I have a right to, and that is due process and equal protection of the law, which are the two things that were denied us via the redlining policies of 1939. So the city has a lot to learn from the existence and movement because there is a resurrection of it from that. Thank you.
Blair?
Hi, Blair Beekman here. Thanks a lot for the words of Paul Soto. He's been on two important projects now that, that is helping to find the future of our city in historical landmark issues, the statue and, I guess, the Low Rider issues and, and San Pedro issues. And he's working on issues around the previous San Jose City Hall. So I thank you for his work and his efforts and a reminder that every person has a good idea in mind. And luckily, hopefully, they can share those good ideas with city government and, and city government can listen. And when they do, it starts a process that most can agree on, actually. And people have good ideas in life and, and how they add that to the city process. A good luck to ourselves and what maybe not a very, it seems insignificant to some, actually may mean a lot. So it's good to share ideas and thoughts with, with your government and what's possible. And something interesting can grow. And in the very least, what you feel is important to you and that may not be shared as a full community process can at least have space to understand its importance. And that's, for me, a historical landmark all of itself. So thanks a lot for this work and to always want to listen to ideas of what historical landmarks can be and its purpose and process, and good luck on these sort of issues. Thank you for your time.
Back to council.
All right, so we are now, see, I can't remember if we have a motion yet on 10.1, do we? No, we don't. Anybody want to move?
So moved.
Thank you. Councilmember Foley, second, Councilmember Davis. Let's vote.
Jimenez?
Aye.
Corales?
Yes.
Cohen?
Aye.
Roscoe?
Aye.
Davis?
Yes.
Asparza?
Yes.
Arenas?
Yes.
Foley?
Aye.
Mahan?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Licardo?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, we're on to 3.1, the Report of our City Manager. Jennifer?
Thank you, Mayor. I have no report today.
Okay. 3.3, Retirement Board Public Member Interviews.
Yes.
And I believe we have three candidates. Is that right?
There's a total of four. There's three candidates for the police and fire public member and one for federated. They are available for interview. They're all incumbents. You have interviewed them in the past, so you can choose to interview them or not. And we have Howard Lee Ezwar Menen, Sunita Ganapati for police and fire, and then for federated, we have Anurag Chandra.
Okay. I realize now that they've taken the time to actually be down here.
They are virtual.
Oh, they're virtual. Okay, good. Okay, fabulous. I'm always happy to hear their thoughts about perhaps how we can work together more productively. So I would certainly be happy to hear from them, but let me just check in with my colleague to see how we feel. I know we've got a busy agenda. Will entertain any motion at this time?
I'll move approval.
Second.
Okay, is that as to every one of the four candidates?
Yes.
And Mayor, that motion is with a big thank you to the candidates for showing up.
Yes.
Okay.
Ditto.
There is a motion for approval with a big thank you. And that goes for all four candidates and the second was Councilmember Foley. All right, Councilmember Peros?
I was just gonna say, should they wish to say a few words, I think we can ask them to raise their hand and offer them to do that.
Okay, is that right with the maker of the motion?
That's okay.
All right, why don't we do that? I guess we do have public hands up as well. So why don't we go first to the public and then we'll ask any of our board members if they'd like to speak as well. So, Tony?
Paul Soto?
Yes, Paul Soto from the horseshoe. A little basic civics lesson. The council works for us. The people that are represented today are going to be on, on committees that are going to be making very critical decisions about pensions, about whether or not an officer or department's claim for disability is legitimate or not. So with that said, I think it's irresponsible for this council to just, yeah, okay, well, yeah, we'll just hire them. We don't have any kind of obligation to the public, which you are representatives of. That's all you are. You work, you do, I tell you to. This is the dynamic. It's not top-down, okay? The, the people, the, the people that are asking for this job are responsible ultimately to me because I'm the taxpayer, okay? And I want to know, and I want to know that my council members have questions for them. Because when they don't, it makes me a little, a little suspicious. Because I've been to these committees. I've been there and I've seen the criterion that they use for claiming a disability, and believe me, the threshold is extremely low and, and a little, a little questionable. Okay, so from an ethics point of view, I would like them questioned. And I would like them questioned on ethics. I would like them questioned in, in, in a way that lets me know that they're not gonna just give, just be a rubber stamp committee and just allow officers or fire departments make claims with respect to disability and just be given a rubber stamp. I want somebody that's gonna be there and challenge somebody because I'm sorry, I just don't trust that process and trust that system.
Blair?
Hi, Blair Beekman here. I have a slightly different take than Paul on this item about how retirement boards talk to city employees about retirement issues. I think city employees kind of should be given the benefit of the doubt. I've attended a few meetings lately and my personal feeling, good luck how it can be a, I don't know, working on those sort of issues together towards good goals, I guess, shared good goals. I wanted to offer about, another thing about retirement board issues. I just wanted to note that I started first listening to retirement board meetings a few years ago. I thought, I think, I feel it's really interesting things, actually, that it's, there's a very interesting harbinger towards what to expect in the future of a city and a community, you know, two, a year down the road, two years, three years, and so forth. And it's been a really interesting process for me in that. In 2021, in like January, February, or March, a sort of regular speaker came around talking about the importance of how we could address inflation issues. And it was a really informative, good lesson. And the retirement board itself at the time politely said, well, we're, I think we're going in a slightly different direction right now. Thank you for your time and services. And that was that. You know, this was as, you know, new police union raises were just starting to take place. And a few months later, the, you know, the food grocery store contracts for COVID issues were, were starting to, to be risen, right, raised up. So just an important reminder of what we can learn in this process. Thanks.
Brian?
Sorry about that. Thank you very much. For the, for the people who are, being the, the members of the retirement board, I want to thank you for your service. And it's amazing how you're making this balance because a lot of people are depending on you and they've worked for 30 years. You know, I'm, I'm only like 20 days away from my retirement and I can't tell you how thankful I am for the people who, you know, the balance and the fact that there's gonna be money there and we hope it continues. I'm coming out of Sturs, so that's a bit different in purse. But still, I think the city, a lot of people depend on you and as they get older, it's a, it's a lot of hard work. You're, you're honoring people who have gone ahead and, if that makes any sense. And I consider that sacred. And I, I mean, money is not the most important thing, but it sure makes things a lot easier for folks, for the most part, unless you're a county or whatever, get into that. Anyways, thanks again for your service. I appreciate you letting me speak. And Mayor-elect, congratulations.
Back to the council.
All right, thank you. I just wanted to say to all of our board members first, thank you for your service. This is no small amount of time and you're all very busy people. And, you know, I know a little bit about the time investment because I used to serve on the board. And one of the best things we ever did was decide to pull council members off of voting rolls to make sure that we had professionals. And what we have now, obviously, are people with great, rich experience and as fund managers, finance, and, and. off of voting rolls to make sure that we had professionals. And what we have now, obviously, are people with great, rich experience and as fund managers, finance, and law, and a host of other areas that have really helped us, I think, navigate these challenging waters much better than otherwise. And so I'm very, very grateful for the education experience of the very professional people we have joining the board. I know a couple have raised their hand and I certainly want to encourage folks, board members, to let us know as the council, how perhaps we can work together more effectively to achieve our common ambitions around ensuring that we have a fund that will continue to be there for retirees for many years to come and that we can do everything we can as a city to support your important work. So first, let me go to Mr. Menon.
Yeah, thank you. So I've been on the board four years and I've served as a charity investment committee for about two and a half. And I've been on the joint personnel committee for about a year. And I think, and I joined, you know, we had, there were two goals in my mind. One is to reduce the unfunded liability. The second is bring stability in terms of the investment staff. I think we've made considerable progress there. I think there's still, you know, some work to be done. And that is my goal, you know, as I seek a second term. I'd like to thank, you know, the mayor and council members, particularly councilmember Pam Foley, who's, you know, who attends the meetings. You've been very supportive in terms of the work that you do. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Chandra?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Let me get my hand lowered. Yeah, first, I wanted to thank the council for having given me the opportunity to serve one plus terms. I actually came in partway through for trustee Druyan and then had my own term this past time. I just wanted to make two comments. If I take the balance of the comments that the public made, I think that there is, there's the issue of really, do we understand our fiduciary duties as trustees? And I'll speak for myself, but I'll also speak for my fellow trustee members on the federated board. We take this very seriously and we really do understand that we're here to serve the best interests of the employees and the retirees. Some of the issues are quite complicated. Sometimes there's competing concerns that we have to consider, but I'm proud to serve with people who are always trying to do their best and apply their best judgment. The second thing I'd like to say is a little bit of a shameless plug, maybe following up on Eswar's words. I think in the last, in the five years since I've joined, I think that we've done a tremendous job of bringing stability, process, organization, setting really good governance, which I think is the critical and most important component of success within our investment office. Second thing we've done is established a very clear investment policy. And the third thing we did, and I also served on the joint personnel committee, is hired a world-class CIO, shameless plug, but I think we have the best in the state. And because of all of that, you've seen the funded status increase for both plans. Over on the federated side, we were bottom percentile of performers when I joined. Two fiscal years ago, I believe, we were in the top decile. This fiscal year that just ended, I believe the numbers are not settled, but we should still be in the top quartile. But I think there's still some work left to be done to institutionalize all of this good work so that, you know, the office is led, left in good shape after the trustees on my board leave and after the CIO and his staff eventually move on. And I think we're, we're on that path. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chandra. And I appreciate your endorsement of our CIO, particularly since we weathered a couple of years without a CIO and it did not go well, I know. Ms. Ganapati, welcome.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, for giving me the opportunity to say a few words. I, this is, I completed a half term. I believe I filled someone else's seat right in the middle of COVID. And so I guess the perspective I have in terms of the board, I'm back here because I feel it's been an incredible experience to be able to, you know, contribute to the broader community and it's been a pleasure to be working so closely with our fire and police folks on the board as well as my co-public members, who are all extremely knowledgeable professionals. I think the couple of observations I might make, and I was, I was in front of the council a couple of weeks ago presenting the fee, fee analysis. So that was, you know, of course, with Prabhu was presenting it. And, you know, I think we continue to remain focused on concerns that the council might have had in the past to demonstrate putting, putting fees, being conscious about where we use our fees. I remember being asked this question a couple of years ago, and so it's sort of played out nicely that we, you know, we've really done well, or the group has done really well in being conscious of where to spend that money carefully. The other thing I might observe is we, you know, it's, this is not, there's no magic bullet to bridging, bridging unfunded liabilities, but I think we have an extremely thought-through process and with best intentions and with such a knowledgeable board, I feel like we should be able to weather the next few years where we're in a very different industry regime, quite interestingly. And that, that makes it exciting for somebody like me who's just warmed up to her seat and is looking forward to another four years of service. That's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ganapati. I do appreciate your point and particularly the progress made around fees. It's not without notice that the funds have performed very well and as was mentioned, the top decile and perhaps the top quartile, despite the fact fees are coming down, that says something. And Mr. Lee?
Hello. Hello. Yeah, well, first of all, thank you, council and mayor, for allowing me to step up here and to renew and to continue my service for the plan and members and for the city. I'm honored to serve. I, like Sunita, I joined the board just prior to the pandemic and it's been a, I think it's been an eye-opening experience from a very positive point of view. I think we have a great team here with Prabhu. I think we still have work to do with the unfunded liability, but we are in, I think, the right direction. I really appreciate the communication with the council through Pam. Her contributions every board meeting have been very, very helpful to us and she helps bridge the, bridge the gap between the work that we do and the work that the city is also doing and making sure everything is in parallel. And to echo what the other board members said, we take our roles very seriously, both from an ethical as well as a work point of view. In fact, you know, I would say probably take this as seriously, more seriously than, than a lot of the work I do on a day-to-day basis, just because we're fiduciaries and we have to take care of people as well as their future incomes. So that's something that's really, I think, important to me and I think it's important to the rest of our board members. And I am, I'm looking forward to try to continue the work that we, at least I've started since the pandemic to, on this board. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. And thank you on behalf of the thousands of retirees who depend on your collective management of billions of dollars for them as fiduciaries. Councilmember Foley?
Thank you. I just wanted to thank the trustees who are reapplying for their positions. Having served on the police and fire retirement board for four years as the council liaison, I can tell you that a conversation is always held in these meetings about the unfunded liabilities, about their fiduciary responsibility, which is to protect the investment and assets of the retirees. And always they ask the impact of their decisions on the city and the unfunded liabilities. I am always impressed by the level and depth of the conversation from the three on the retirement, the police and fire retirement board, Howard, Eswar, and Sunita. I can't speak to the federated board. I know councilmember Davis can. But I'm grateful to serve with them and grateful to actually listen into those conversations and hear all of the discussions about the assets and how they're allocated, how they're spent, how they come in, and how we can protect the retiring, retirement funds of our police and fire departments. Thank you. And thank you for your service.
All right. Thank you, councilmember Foley. Any other comments from either my colleagues or from members of the board? Okay, let's then vote on the motion.
Jimenez?
Aye.
Peralas?
Yes.
Cohen?
Aye.
Roscoe?
Aye.
Davis?
Yes.
Esparza?
Yes.
Arenas? Arenas? Foley?
Aye.
Mahan?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Liccardo?
Aye.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you all for your willingness to continue to serve. Okay, we're going to move forward then to the boards and commissions appointments as item 3.4. This is on the civil service commission. And I believe we have two candidates, is that right?
Yes, we have Sharon Hightower, who is the current attorney at law, and Tom Cochran, who is the current member at large. I see Sharon here. I don't see that Tom Cochran is here. They have, these are incumbents, they have been previously interviewed. We are also in the middle of a hearing with them.
Oh, I'm sorry?
There's also, there's also a current hearing that they've been a part of.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Mayor, that wasn't moved to orders of the day or consent?
That was part of, yeah, that was under orders of the day.
Okay.
You voted on orders of the day to approve adding it to the agenda.
Adding to the agenda, yeah, not, not moving to consent.
Oh, okay, my confusion.
It's still before us.
Yeah. And again, you have interviewed both of these people before.
Right.
They have been serving.
Okay, what's the pleasure of my colleagues?
And they are the only applicants.
Move, approve.
Okay, is that as to both candidates, Vice Mayor?
Yes.
All right, there's motion?
Second.
Motion and second. All right, any comments? Let's go to the public first and then we'll, we'll come back to them.
Blair?
Hi, Blair Beekman here. For this item and for the appointees on the last item, I forgot to quickly mention, good luck to all of yourselves in your appointee roles and your new roles or continuing roles of how to consider the concepts of openness and accountability and, and to make this decision-making process that works to not harm each other. It's important to consider those factors in how we make our decisions and openness and accountability ideas can be of help to yourselves in making a better set of decisions. So good luck to ourselves in working those things. It tends to bring out our better selves and how we can work better and it just makes for a better process, how that can go. And I think you can understand what I mean and just thank you for your time and good luck to yourselves in the future work and, and an openness for all of us. Thank you.
Paul?
Yes, Paul Soto from the Horseshoe. My question to the members that are asking to be re- rejoin to their respective positions in the civil service is an ethical one. You see, it was the law for redlining, although the law was racist. So my question to you is this, is that if there is something that is legal, but it is extremely unethical, not only by your own subjective, not only by your subjective analysis, but it's unethical on its face, prima facie. Okay? My question to you is, are you bold enough? Are you courageous enough to challenge the system, though it be against the law, but you vote your ethical conscience? Because if we had more people that voted their ethical conscience in the formation of San Jose, we wouldn't be in this position of having to undo racist policies that have affected Chicanos for generations. So my question to you is a very specific one. Would you vote your ethics, though it go against the law? Because the law of ethics and the law of the land, considering that the law of the land was established by racist policies, that means the racism is institutionalized. And because it is institutionalized, you have a moral and ethical obligation to undo that. That is my question to you. Are you courageous enough to do that? Thank you.
Back to the council.
All right. I just wanted to recognize, particularly since Sharon Hightower is here, something that, in case anybody read over this too quickly, this is on one of the final pages of her application. She served as a member vice chair and hearing officer of the San Jose Civil Commission from 1995 to 2008, from 2016 until 2022. That is many decades of service while she has been a full-time attorney with her own practice, while she continues to serve the San Clara County Bar Association as a panel arbiter, arbitrator for the fee arbitration committee. So that is public service. And I just want to say thank you, Sharon, for your dedication to our city, particularly since we need the expertise of at least one attorney on this commission and you have been that person. So thank you, Sharon.
My pleasure.
All right. And this is your last chance to get off the panel. Before we vote. All right. We have a motion, though. Let's vote.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Peralas?
Yes.
Cohen?
Aye.
Roscoe?
Aye.
Davis?
Yes.
Esparza?
Yes.
Arenas?
Yes.
Foley?
Aye.
Mahan?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Liccardo?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, well, Sharon, you're back on.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you again for your, for your tremendous service and dedication to our community.
Absolutely. Thank you to the council.
All right, let's move forward to item 8.1, which is a public hearing on homeless housing assistance and prevention program application, actually known as HAP. There will be a presentation. Welcome Omar and Kelly and Reagan.
Reagan Henninger, Deputy Director of the Housing Department. I'm joined by Kelly Hempel, our division manager with the Housing Department. We are here today to hold a public hearing for the homeless housing assistance and prevention program known as HAP. This is our fourth round of HAP funding from the state. I will note that a public hearing on the proposed expenditures is required under the state statute. So by way of brief history, you can see here our previous rounds of HAP totaling $64 million. We've not received our HAP III disbursement yet, but we do expect it soon from the state. The state paused distribution of HAP III funds to request cities submit the most aggressive outcomes for their HAP programs as possible. So the state was particularly interested in each city's goal to reduce unsheltered homelessness, or sometimes called street homelessness. The city's goal for HAP III funds is to reduce unsheltered homelessness by 4%. So to develop this goal, the city, in coordination with the County Office of Supportive Housing, examined our HAP III baseline data along with our regional point in time counts, which is our census of homeless individuals. An analysis of trend line projections taken from our PIC count had a significant impact on determining the outcome goals regarding unsheltered homelessness. So looking at that data between 2018 and 2020, the point in time count demonstrated that unsheltered homelessness would increase by 45% throughout the county. Based on that trend line, the number of unsheltered homeless individuals was projected to increase by 62%, or over 5,000 people between 2020 and 2024. But the goal-setting tool supplied by the state projected that without any intervention, the total number of people experiencing unsheltered homelessness would increase by almost 13,000 people by 2024. So the graph that you see on the right is a screenshot of the CALICH goal-setting tool. It shows how the interventions that San Jose and Santa Clara County implement, the redline, will flatten the sharp curve when compared to a scenario in which no, no interventions take place to prevent or resolve homelessness. That's the dashed line that you see with the sharp increase. So the plan outlined in the City of San Jose's HAP III application projected a 4% decrease in unsheltered homelessness by 2024, which actually represents a 41% decrease from the projected unsheltered population that was predicted by the CALICH goal-setting tool. So you can see here, since 2019, some of the impact of our HAP funds. We've used predominantly for the construction and operation of five emergency interim housing communities that have sheltered nearly 1,200 individuals. We've also used it for our homelessness prevention program that have kept almost 7,000 people in their homes. And also for street-based programs such as our motel voucher program and our services outreach and assistance and resources program, or our SOAR outreach program. We submit outcome goals for all of our HAP funds. These are the outcome goals for the HAP III funds. So we'll work jointly with the County Office of Supportive Housing to develop our goals for HAP IV. The eligible uses for HAP IV are similar to previous rounds of HAP. 10% by state statute must be used for programs serving youth and young adults. 7% can be used for administration. And other eligible uses include interim shelter, prevention, and street-based services. So the Housing Department's proposed spending plan for HAP III is here. Keep in mind, we have not received our precise allocation from the state yet, so these are percentages. We anticipate a similar amount in HAP IV that we received in HAP III, which was $29 million. This proposed spending plan also responds to the mayor's March budget message for fiscal year 2223 that was approved by council, which directed the city manager to allocate sufficient amount of one-time funding through a combination of federal, state, and other resources to enable the development and construction and ongoing services and operations of our interim housing sites. And also in manager's budget addendum number three, we did provide the council a projection of the services and operations for our EIH sites and the cost, and we did include an allocation from HAP IV of approximately $17 million. So the remaining funds, we're proposing to continue our SOAR street outreach program, a prevention and diversion program for homeless youth that's been developed in partnership with our homeless youth advisory board. And finally, the remaining funds for our partnership with our lived experience advisory board and funding our centralized shelter hotline. Here's the timeline for HAP funds. Our application is actually due to the state today. In early 2023, the state will release each city's allocation. And then in mid-2023, we are required to submit a more detailed budget and expenditure plan to the state. Then all of the HAP IV funds have to be spent by June of 2027. That concludes the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Reagan. All right, and thank you to you and Kelly and everybody on the team, Omar, who's been working so hard to use these dollars effectively to address this crisis. Let's go to the public.
Yes, Paul Sotomayor from the horseshoe. That your statistics are a mockery, because it doesn't really accurately, objectively articulate what's really actually happening on the street. Okay, 11% during COVID? Even our mayor said this is a joke. That's not even accurate. It's, it was at least three times at at least 33% it had accelerated. And that's going to be the norm. That's number one. Number two is the fact that we have Martin versus Boise. This is a Supreme Court decision that says that any human being in the United States can set up a camp anywhere if they are not provided adequate alternatives. Martin versus Boise. This is the Supreme Court. So you guys like to talk about the law? Start following the law then, because that is the law of the land. But of course, you break that one, right? So you get to pick and choose which laws you break? Is anybody on this council above the Supreme Court? Are you or aren't you? Because if you're not, then why are you committing these sweeps? Thirdly, you keep giving billionaires tax breaks. You keep depriving the citizenry of money we got coming, because these dudes are guests. They come to this city, they exploit the land, they exploit the workers, they're going to pollute the air, and then they're going to cut with the profits. And they're going to leave us dealing with what it is that they have left for us. And you guys are welcoming that by giving them tax breaks. Uh-uh, I want the money. They got that, those millions in their ass.
Blair?
Hi, where we've been here. To quickly offer, I don't want to step on anybody's toes, but I hope the sweep process is going well, and you're offering a good notification period before sweeps. That should be kind of easy to do, I think, and it doesn't cost very much money. So good luck in those sort of efforts. They're just human good things to do, and what builds a better community, I think. With that said, you know, good luck with this issue. I hope that, you know, I'm getting the feeling that the housing staff is starting to better organize themselves from within. Good luck how they continue that good work and to talk to, you know, good, you know, long-term people of the community who want to build a real holistic sense of housing for our future. Good luck in that advice and hearing that advice and those ideas and that process. I think we could be on to something pretty important. How we can organize, you know, at the county level, they want to, you know, have all women and children housed, define housing for them by 2025. And we have subsidy plans that can really help with that process at this time. You had a couple items that you spoke of here today where you were going to try to find housing for people, permanent housing for people easier. Hopefully, you know, you organized yourselves from within, and you can do that better now. And there was another concept of how you want to, of how you can practice, boy, I can't, it slipped my mind right now, but how we can practice housing for people that, just a good luck how to organize ourselves. And you're on the right track. Good luck and continue good work in this effort. Thank you.
Back to council.
Okay, let's go to council for questions, comments. You don't need a motion, right? This is just a hearing? Okay.
That's right.
Okay. I just wanted to check in, since there's been a wee bit of controversy about this program in the papers from our governor. Since all of that has come down, you guys have had conversations with HCD, I assume, is that right?
That's right. It's CALICH.
Oh, I'm sorry, CALICH, thank you. And are they kosher with our methodology and our approach based on those conversations?
CALICH has done quite a bit of analysis on all the jurisdictions that have submitted their outcome goals, and they're not, they're not 100% in line with the governor's office. However, they do honor what he's saying, and so they have put together a 90-day window after we submit our application today to talk about how we can comfortably get to a point that is ambitious enough.
Yeah, I understand your point, Kelly. I think I understand the implication. I guess more specifically, I was less interested in whether they're aligned with the governor. I know there have been issues, but more quite, more interested in whether or not they're aligned with us. That is, are they comfortable with what we're submitting in terms of our data?
They have been, yes.
Okay, great.
And I would just add, there are other cities who are actually projecting things like an increase in unsheltered homelessness, and we are a city that's actually saying, hey, we're going to, we're going to bring it down.
Right. Amid the many, the very substantial hard news and bad news we've encountered over recent years, we have accomplished some very modest reduction in unsheltered homelessness over the last two years based on pit count, I guess it'd be three years. So we have some basis for believing we have a model we think that's working, and we think we can continue to reduce this despite the significant, the very significant headwinds, I think, that every city faces in this state. Is that, is that fair?
Yeah, that's right, Mayor. We, based on our last point in time census, we saw a 2% decrease in unsheltered homelessness in San Jose, which is in alignment with all of the new emergency interim housing communities we've built, and we've taken people from encampments to shelter and then from sheltering at our interim housing communities. We see a very high percentage rate moving on to permanent housing. So it's a very hopeful sign when you think about the new interim housing communities that we'll be bringing online in addition to our project home key sites. We will reach our goal of 1,000 new beds, and our system-wide goal is to double our emergency beds. So we think we're making significant progress, even though, as you say, the headwinds aren't in our favor. As we house one person, there's two more new people who enter our homeless system for the first time.
Thank you, Reagan. And last question, and I really want to appreciate all the hard work that you and the entire team have put in to make all this happen. But the headwinds specifically, obviously, there's a very sharp increase in projection of unsheltered homelessness if we essentially do nothing. And is that, can you help us understand? I know that's coming from, ultimately from county data, which is coming from state data. Can you just tell us sort of the major factors you see that are driving that very large projection? I assume the expiration of the...
I was just about to say.
Oh, yeah, okay. I won't take it from you.
The, definitely the expiration of the eviction moratorium has a huge impact. There's quite a few external factors that we have zero control over. I think, you know, COVID had a really huge impact in people becoming homeless and having, and losing their jobs and their income and their homes. We can't predict whether or not that's going to happen again. Those are the main points, I believe. I mean, there's so many external factors that...
The many economic factors that put us where we're at.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, there, it's a whole ecosystem of really difficult headwinds that we face, whether it's, you know, broken safety net systems, whether that's our criminal justice system, our healthcare systems, all of these systems cause people to experience homelessness in addition to the rising cost of housing. I think in our San Jose area, for every 100 people that need an extremely low-income, affordable housing unit, there's only 30 that are actually available. So, you know, every day, I think new people are experiencing homelessness for the first time.
Right, okay, thank you. I just wanted to have that clearly articulated, because I know there are many residents who are here now and are watching or wondering why we're being so aggressive about trying to get housing built. And I think the message is pretty clear. We're in a crisis now, and it's not going to get better. And it's certainly not going to get better if we do nothing. It can get a whole lot worse. And it's hard to imagine, because this crisis is as bad as certainly the cities have ever experienced. I know that's true for every big city in the state. We're all grappling with this. And so there is simply no, no excuse for inaction. We've got to, we've got to push ahead. All right, let's go to any other questions? If not, we'll move on to the next item, because I don't think we need any motion. All right, let's go to item...
Mayor?
Oh, I'm sorry, forgive me. I didn't look at the Zoom screen. Was that Councilmember Arenas?
Yes, that's me. I just had a question about the transition to permanent housing, and if you could put up that slide where it has the, I think, the breakdown. And there seemed to be a higher, a higher permanent housing placement when people were placed in motels. Is there, is it because it's more, I guess I'm wondering why, why the higher rate for permanent placement?
I believe you are referring to the motel voucher program, Councilmember Arenas?
Yeah, no, I am referring to that, but there was this slide, I thought.
And I believe that it is a combination of transition to temporary and permanent programs for families.
I think it's, it's slide number four.
It's slide four?
Yeah, slide four.
Yeah.
There you go. Yeah, see, there were more individuals in the motel voucher. That could also represent families, right?
Correct, yes.
Less, less under the sheltered. And there was a higher transition to permanent or temporary housing.
Is the... Go ahead. Sorry, it is households. It's primarily, if not all, families. So it's a lower number of households than individuals. And, you know, it's a totally different population with families. There are quite a few resources for families, and there are fewer families, frankly, to assist. So we do have a little bit more success with families.
I think overall, Councilmember, in our entire homelessness response system, our homeless management information data consistently says that homeless families are often experiencing homelessness for a shorter period of time, more often than an individual. Also, in this time period, our region received 1,000 emergency housing vouchers from the federal government, which we have devoted to homeless families as part of our Heading Home campaign, which is our campaign to end family homelessness. So we have, when we have dedicated resources, we can demonstrate significant progress in housing families.
Great. And how does that line up with what we're seeing in the school districts? There was a toy drive last week, and I was talking to the Evergreens, no, not the superintendent, assistant superintendent, and he was sharing with me that the homeless families had doubled from last year in this district. And so I wonder, how are, how are you all continuing to connect with the McKinnevento?
I am so glad you asked this, Councilmember. Coincidentally, we are partnering with the County Office of Education currently, looking at direct referrals to our motel voucher program for families with children in schools. And so that's actually their request, and I think it's an easy one to fulfill, and that'll strengthen our partnership as well. So we are working on that currently.
Great, and so this is where I... And so this is where I wink, wink, I pretend that I, we, we didn't set this up. So does that, does that, is that referral, that's a new process? You hadn't used a referral process before?
We use the centralized shelter hotline primarily for this, but we would like to dedicate some slots for, for the Office of Education.
Oh, that, that is great. That is great. It, it would be interesting to hear, well, if it, at the end of December, or even for our, our incoming council members to hear what the impact is on families and what that need looks like, so we can continue to, I know you are all monitoring this and making sure that there's resources that are specific to families, but I think there's, there's, there needs to be a greater understanding among council members, especially those who are coming in, that those, that takes more time, and it takes more resources to support. And so very cognizant of that, so that we can continue to support your housing department appropriately. Those were my questions. Thank you.
All right. Any other comments or questions? All right, let's move forward then. And by the way, I do want to thank Senator Tony Atkins, Senator Nancy Skinner, and Senate Member Phil Ting for their very hard work in getting this funding to cities and to counties. It wasn't going to happen without them. All right, on to 8.2C, Emergency Housing System Expansion: Recreational Vehicle Parking Program Analysis. I know we have a memorandum from Councilmember Sparza. I don't believe there's, is there a presentation? No, there's no presentation, but we're open for questions. Let's go to the public first.
Jeff Holmes.
Yes, thank you, Council and Mayor Licardo. I'm a property owner located about a block and a half from the proposed Santa Teresa RV park, and we've, we've had our property previously in downtown San Jose for about 22 years, and over the top, the timeframe of 22 years, we had one vandalism. We've been out in Santa Teresa, San Ignacio, and in the last 12 months, we've had six vandalisms on our property. And one of the biggest concerns that we have is how are you going to propose to assist with security for not only our, our residents in the area, but the, the businesses, because we've got a lot of employees who are, who are starting to get scared? And at the end of the day, it's going to result in another empty building for you. We've spent $48,000 in the last four months of replacing glass and security in an office building that is literally one block away from where the proposed RV park is. Our insurance costs have doubled in the last year, and we're not seeing any, any bright spots coming in that area. So while we are all for housing homeless and, and dealing with mental health issues, we feel that there hasn't been any consideration or open discussions specifically about where those locations are, and a considerable amount of them are really proposed within a mile and a half radius of, of where the VTA is on the, of Santa Teresa. So any insights on possibilities of looking maybe a little further south, like Coyote Valley and areas like that, instead of such a high-density concentration? And then secondly, any looking into security for the area, or an increase in security?
Monica Rising.
250 people died last year on our streets of homelessness. That was in Santa Clara County, and most of those deaths were in San Jose. We're on target for that, having that many again this year. It shouldn't be a death penalty to lose your housing due to COVID, or loss of employment, or illness, or divorce, or any other disasters. We need to provide our neighbors a place to be safe and have their basic humans' needs addressed, like having toilets and garbage pickup. We need long-term solutions, which you've been talking about, but we also need solutions for them for today. I say yes to, to tiny homes and safe park areas in my neighborhood to, in the, in the interim. My understanding is that family shelters have a six-month waiting period, and the reality is, if someone is alive and homeless, they still need a place to exist until solutions are found. Let's save some lives and provide safe places for them to be.
Blair Beekman.
Hi, Blair Beekman here. I'm a bit disappointed there wasn't sort of, some sort of staff presentation for this item at this time. This has been going on for about a month now within council. There's been some interesting work on it. I've learned Mountain View has some interesting practices of RVs, how, how they're addressing their RV issues, that I hope you guys have been, you know, referring to and learning about and understanding. I remember what, from the previous item, what I wanted to talk about, that I can speak on this item, because it was from this RV use, that it was mentioned that, you know, as they're trying to house people from Columbus Park at this time, they're having a problem with follow-up issues. And, you know, it seems to me that, I hope we can learn the practices of city government staff can, can learn how to have better follow-up practices, once they work so hard to get people into some sort of temporary place, that they can then, you know, follow up with them to make sure their housing can continue. That's the kind of stuff with the previous item that I hope can be useful, that was mentioned for all this month, you know, and all the work in this past month on this item, that good luck how we, we can address this issue. And, and as the first caller mentioned, you know, and what I'm just trying to learn for the first time is, where in some areas, you know, housing may not be wanted or respected, but it's, it's learning to find that place together. That's, that's the important cause, and how to, what to work towards and negotiate around, and I'm just understanding that. Good luck in those efforts, how we can all learn to do that together. Thank you.
Paul Soto.
Yes, Paul Soto from the horseshoe. First of all, I want to acknowledge what the gentleman was stating about the, the property damage that he's incurred. And, and I, as a member of the, of the houseless community, as a member of the mental health community, and as a member of the recovery and alcoholic and addict community, and as a member of the recovering convict community, that I understand and I sympathize with what he's saying, because he, he very clearly stated to the city that it's not necessarily the people that are committing these, because you will naturally have social issues when you have unhoused. That's natural. It's not that there's something wrong with the people. We have to examine the systems that created the poverty in the first place. That is where we need to go, and that's right here at this city. It's not the population. It is the policies. We do not have to go after the people that are experiencing the symptoms of the poverty creation that is, that is created here via policy every single Tuesday. Violence against these communities that are vulnerable to challenge the city on its gentrification process that has happened historically over the past 80 years. That's clear. Number two is the fact that San Jose does not have a homeless shelter at all. There is no homeless shelter that the city itself provides. Thus, Martin versus Boise is applicable, but yet the city has been breaking the Supreme Law of the Land, the state, the Supreme Court of the United States, has stated clearly that you can camp out anywhere if the city itself does not provide adequate housing.
Gabby Mendoza.
Hello, how are you? Yes, my name is Israel Mendoza. I'm calling you from District 7. I'm encouraging you to do anything necessary to help the community, creating park RVs so they can park. They already have the RV, you know, they already have the park, just provide them the space, okay? Remember, the government is measured by the way you treat the most vulnerable, and they are the most vulnerable. It's very cold, you know, and we need to help them, and we need to take the mentality of not in my backyard, out of San Jose, because we all San Jose, we all want. So please help out, make sure, I encourage you to do these parks and more of them, okay? And thank you.
Jill Borders.
Hi, thank you, Jill Borders. I'm a District 10 resident, and I too just want to echo what Blair Beekman said. I thought that this item, in fact, I'm a little confused. I feel like I must have the wrong item, because I thought that a month ago, when it was decided to come back and hear the full report about the expansion of the RV parking, that there would have been a much more broad report discussing a lot. I guess I just feel sort of left empty. What is it that we were waiting for to get? I don't mean to be disrespect, disrespectful for the, that work hard on these reports, but I don't know, I don't have anything more in my mind here or seeing here to work with to help those in my community that currently live in District 10 in RVs that I have befriended, and, and also said, you know, hey, we have this to look forward to, I'll keep you posted. And so as a District 10 resident who is supportive of the, the VTA RV parking, I, I was just so looking forward to hearing much more about how this would go about. I hope that that is to come, maybe when the council begins to speak. But I just want to also add that these people that I befriend that are in these RVs, and these are people that, you know, I'm so impressed by their courage each day. One gentleman parks on, on a street that's right next to my house, and he, he gets out, and he's very respectful and keeps everything around him clean. He has this American flag that flags above it. He's got his bicycle posted there, and then he's walking to his job. And so I just have so much respect for people that are, are working in San Jose, contributing to our success here, and we, we've got to find ways to be helpful. Thank you.
I have some in-person speakers who just submitted cards, so I'm going to call all of you down. First person to the microphone, just get there and say your first name. I have Gail Osmer, Cheryl Imus, Patricia, and Francesca. If you could make your way down, first person to the microphone, just go ahead and go straight to the podium.
Wow, this came up quickly. Hi, everybody. Gail Osmer here. I brought a couple people that live in RVs from Columbus Park. Oh, excuse me if you've been rushing. I wanted to talk on the memo from, as far as a council member, as far as a, you know, when people live in RVs, they have the same rights as people that have homes. And her memo with bio-waste, I think the RV parks should be having porta potties. We have porta potties at Columbus. Let's get porta potties. You know, we need a safe parking for RVs. We all know that. Every single one of you council people and the new ones all need to get safe RV parking. There's more RVs on the street now than ever before. A lot of people are even working, believe it or not, that are unhoused and live in RVs. Even at Columbus Park, there are people working, living in RVs. We need to get porta potties, you know? We need to get dumpsters. It doesn't cost that much. So if you're, you know, there's, this one coming up at Santa, Santa Teresa, we need to get it going, we need to get it off the ground. People need to get there and be in one area. You talk about all these people saying, oh, they're in my neighborhood, in my neighborhood. Okay, yeah, we know. Let's get them into safe parking. Let's get them together. These are families. All these people at Columbus are family members, not literally, but they, they can't be apart. They love to be together, they watch over each other. We need to have respect for people living in RVs. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
I've never been to one of these meetings, so bear with me, please. I, I currently live in an RV in Columbus Park, and my concern was safe parking, because it's not real safe out there, but that's the only place we have to park right now. So, and I did talk to somebody the other day, but there's only safe parking for cars. There aren't, there isn't a place currently, or that, he informed me that they didn't have any place for RVs to be where there was safe parking. So that was my concern, and that's what I wanted to say. Is that it?
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, my name is Patricia. I was here last time that you had a meeting. Yes, I'm still at Columbus Park. I'm still asking for safe parking. I'm still asking for help. We do need dumpsters, like she, like Gail said. We also need porta potties, and we need lights. I don't know if you guys can help us with that. My concern is, how can I say it? I just wish that the city could help us out with at least some safe parking. Some of us, it's hard for us, because we don't have help with like, like stuff like Some of the RVs don't run, and some, you know, I seen a lot of things after that last meeting that I was here, it was really hard, it would hurt, because a lot of people lost their homes, I mean, their RVs, and that's where they lived. I don't know if you guys would know what it's like to live out there. It's, it's not a good thing, and you know, I wish that just have a little bit of sympathy for us, just a little bit. I mean, there's a lot of us out there, and then there's people, you know, in other places too that I've seen, and you know, it's a sad thing, and I don't know if it's going to grow more. You know, I don't want it to grow any bigger than what it is. I mean, because I used to help homeless people too, and I never thought I would be homeless myself, and look where I'm at today. All I'm asking is for help, for us to, you know, at least get, how can I say it? Somewhere where they can at least help us with RVs to be parked right. I mean, I'm, I'm willing to even volunteer for cleanup, for two, to, to make sure everything is clean, to make sure everything's in order. I, and you know, whatever it would take just for you guys to help us. That's all I'm asking. Thank you.
Thank you, Patricia.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, my name's Francesca Pace, and I want to go back to 2016, and I believe Mayor Licardo said that every district would ho, host a tiny home village, and I thought that was so fair, that every district would have at least one. So I know a lot of people here aren't interested in having the RV park or the tiny home on Cottle, but I want to say yes to both. I want to say yes to RV parking, safe parking at many VTA lots. I think that's fabulous. We already have parking spaces, it's already graded, it's already paved. Every VTA parking lot comes with a light. It's not like you drive in without, and, and exit without lights. I think that's excellent. I know people are worried about the congestion. Well, the, the dwellers in these RVs are our neighbors. These are our neighbors. So we have to treat them as neighbors, and I expect my city to provide, you know, trash pickup, sanitation, if they need help with registration. I don't see how we're still at this stage and not having gotten that done. So I'd also be interested in knowing if each of the council people know how many boots on the ground are in your district by the money that you give to the nonprofits? Because if you think that 20 cases per a case manager is reasonable, this city would need 250, and I've worked for a nonprofit, and we had 15. I don't think we have near the structure and the support for all the RV parking lots that we need, and for all the tiny homes. So I think what the public is so inadequately educated on... and for all the tiny homes. So I think what the public is so inadequately educated on is the fact that we just don't even have the structure to support it. But I'm yes for housing, yes for RVs. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's our last speaker.
Okay, let's come back to the council. Councilmember Sparza.
Thank you, Mayor. I have four questions. One is about the census and survey. You know, RV dwellers are as diverse as any other group of folks. And I wanted to understand, do we plan to devise a part of the survey that delves into why some RV dwellers living in city streets have declined services in the past, because they've told us they didn't consider themselves to be homeless. This has come up before, and I think it's something that we need to dig deeper on.
Councilmember Sparza, this is Omar Passan, Deputy City Manager. I'm here with Reagan Henninger, Deputy Director for Housing Department. The short answer is yes. I mean, I know we submitted a pretty long, detailed report, but your question about teasing out what the issues are that people are facing who are living in RVs or oversized vehicles is part of the reason that we are looking to partner with Destination Home and their Lived Experience Advisory Board, as well as any subcontractors, to really try to get at the type of designed questions that will elicit what you're asking about, so that we really do have a good sense of, you know, what the issues are around, why some services may be more or less successful, what the specific needs of people are, so that they will utilize what we can make available.
Okay, thank you. I bring that up because this was specifically cited multiple times during COVID, when we would send outreach teams out, and to different parts of the city. And in particular, you know, there was a segment of the RV population that did not think of themselves as homeless, and thereby refused, you know, all the services. So I think kind of digging deeper into why that is, and how that can be addressed to meet those specific needs, I think is really important if this program is going to be successful.
That's a good point, Councilmember. And I would just add, one of the pieces that we were able to look into is a deep dive by the Los Angeles County, sort of off their homeless initiative, around a countywide RV encampment effort, where they did exactly the point that you're alluding to, as far as the level of intensity about different types of folks who may at least initially want a more long-term place to keep the RV that they're in, even while they may ultimately transition. So we put a little bit of that detail in the memo, but it is something that, just for your sake, and for all of your colleagues in the council and the public, it's something that we're really focused on.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful, because I do think, I think that would be helpful information for us to design, or offer the services in a way that folks will use ultimately. The other thing is, I wanted to say that I appreciate all the hard work on the report. And I think it's really important to discuss one of the really unpleasant realities, hence my memo. And this is RV bio waste disposal. There, I have had issues in residents in District 7. I'm sure it is not unique to District 7, where residents have had bio waste literally dumped on their front lawns, from folks that were living in RVs nearby. This has been an issue for a school as well in my district, and so of having bio waste dumped in front of the school. And so I know that staff is working on an approach to addressing bio waste service, and planning a pilot for spring to offer that bio waste removal service. You know, this is why I think, you know, again, going back to this is a diverse population as much as any other. I think that enforcement is really important to consider, particularly as this expands citywide. If there are folks who are offered the bio waste removal service, but don't want to take it, and don't dispose of it themselves, you know, through some other service, and publicly dump, illegally dump bio waste into storm sewers and waterways, then I do think we need to consider towing as a last resort. And it's not just a quality of life issue for our residents and businesses. This is a serious public health and environmental issue. And as we build capacity to provide sorely needed services, we need to ensure that folks are using the services and disposing of bio waste properly. And I see someone up, who is that? I'm sorry, I'm on Zoom, so I see a back of a head. I don't see a face.
Hi, Councilmember. It's Andrea Flores Shelton, Deputy Director, PRNS, beautify SJ. Just wanted to respond that in the development of the pilot, and again, testing out different type of services, we would be open to also looking into sort of what that continuum looks like for those that are not willing to participate in the program. So we would be open to looking into that and exploring what those types of rules and consequences might be.
Thank you. And I just think ultimately, we want people to dispose of bio waste properly. So with that, I'll move the staff recommendation and my memo.
Second.
Motion, and give Vice Mayor the second. Councilmember Cohen?
Yeah, thank you. And first of all, I want to thank the speakers who came, some of whom were also at our Rules Committee meeting a few weeks ago. And it's really valuable for us to hear the lived experience and see the reality behind what is on the streets and in the RVs. And I appreciate the courage, but also the, just the input from you. So thanks for being here. At that Rules Committee meeting, we remember all the conversations we were having. I showed one video of a street in North San Jose, which has about 35 RVs parked on it, on both sides of the street. And obviously, we don't have that necessarily as much in residential neighborhoods, that density, but in many of our business districts, we have a large collection of RVs. In that district particularly, we have businesses who are telling me they're not sure they can continue to do business in San Jose, because we can't seem to take care of this problem. And so it's really, really important to me that we find locations for RV parking safely, because, you know, people don't want to be in the way or disruptive, but we have to provide them with space where it's safe and clean. And with the services that would come with that, whether it's porta potties or other kinds of sanitary services and garbage and all that. So I appreciate the staff memo. There's a lot of detail and research in there, and a lot of depth, and I appreciate the work that's coming. I want to just talk a little bit about the importance of continuing while that study and count is happening, for us to be looking for sites in parallel, and continuing to do the work that we've talked about before. And I know that we're doing that. So I'm going to ask Omar. I know we've talked about the list of potential EIH/RV sites in District 4, and whether some of the sites that weren't necessarily appropriate for EIH may be appropriate for RV parking. Can you comment on what you think about that?
Sure. I'm going to start and just ask Jim Orpall, who's been participating in this process for us for some time, to come down as well. You'll remember, I think it was actually your memo that suggested or directed staff to consider the over 150 sites that had been previously provided for emergency interim housing consideration, to look at those sites for RV safe parking. And so that's just to level sets, everybody's on the same sheet of music. The two things I would say, one, you're right that we have to do all of this in parallel. And frankly, we've already started that analysis. That's why I asked Jim to come down. The other is, I think one of the other prioritization items that this Rules Committee voted on, that's on the memo today, is to enable council offices to support RV parking locations in their districts. And part of our challenge is actually just finding sites. And so having good relations and partners as we do that is really helpful. And Jim could give a little update on our status of where we are and how we'll get to sort of that review of those sites.
Thanks. Jim Orpall with the City Manager's Office. I wanted just to make sure I understood the question there. Just the status of our site search for RV parking facilities?
Or just our ability to move forward on that, on using that RV site search from the EIH?
Okay, very good. Yeah, appreciate that. Yeah, in terms of the ongoing site search we've done for emergency interim housing over the years, and then the parallel efforts to do RV parking, they are somewhat different from the standpoint, many of the sites that we reviewed for emergency interim housing are undeveloped. And developing an RV parking facility on undeveloped land is a pretty expensive venture. The amount of investment that it would take to get it ready to do that is pretty significant. And the funding available to do RV safe parking hasn't been there to bring undeveloped sites to a level, to a condition to be able to do RV safe parking. So that's kind of been, they seem to be overlapping pools of sites, but in reality, undeveloped sites are quite pricey to be able to turn into RV parking facilities. So it's a narrower subset, given the funding we've had available, that would be good candidates for RV parking, ones that are already paved, ones that may have other types of utilities available. And typically, those sites have other uses going on, and the owners are not as willing to kind of allow the city to go in and do that type of thing. So we certainly have looked at it, but aren't finding an overlap. So Reagan and I have been involved kind of over the past year, probably looking at about 10 to 12 different sites. And for a variety of reasons, none of them are bubbling up to be viable sites at this point in time. And I think we need to, we do need to go back through the full EIH list, once we get through the next item, and then see what remains available to see, do some of them kind of meet that more focused criteria for a viable RV parking facility.
Thanks, Jim. And I just, and to put a fine point on that, that's something that we'll be doing in an accelerated way. We already had a couple of preliminary conversations, and we'll be doing that in an accelerated way over the next month or so, to make sure that we know what we've got. And just continue to try to work. At the last Rules Committee, one of the members of that body had suggested trying to work with real estate owners to try to find additional sites. And that's something that we remain willing and open to do. So I just, we're going to try everything, because we need everything.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Just to go back to that point, there are though, on the converse, sites that were not appropriate for EIH because of some conditions that wouldn't allow building housing, for example, floodplains or other areas, that actually could be acceptable for a parking type of environment. And so is it not true that some of the sites that were eliminated from the EIH list, for reasons that were because of the structure of the site, are still then potentially available for RV parking?
Absolutely agree. Potentially available.
Right. Okay, so I just want to make sure that that point's understood. I mean, I think, I know you understand it, but it's a key point, which is, you know, once sites have been eliminated from EIH, doesn't mean that they're not appropriate for RV parking. And I've made this commitment before, and I will do it again here, that, you know, I'll work with you and with property owners to have those conversations as well, about how they could help us out in terms of, you know, allowing us to use property for periods of time that might be shorter term, while they're waiting for other uses on sites. We have spoken to some property owners who have said, if we had some sites, we'd be willing to do that. So let's continue to have that conversation. I appreciate that. So yes, I appreciate the work in parallel. We know, while I think it's important to do the census and the count and understand the scope of the problem and the variety of needs, we know there's well over 50, in fact, I think probably over 100 in North San Jose alone, RVs that we're looking to place, that people are anxious to have, find places for. And I'll just talk a little bit about the rest of the things that were in my memo at Rules that are part of your report. We had a good experience doing RV parking at the Vista Montana site. We didn't have a large number of RVs there, but we had about six. But the folks who were there had a safe place to stay, were able to get their vehicles fixed, were able to, you know, look for work and have a safe place to leave their vehicles parked. And it was really good example of what we can do. And one of the things that we learned was, and what's in your memo as well, is the importance of having a program where we can give people resources, financial resources, assistance to help them get the registrations up to date, you know, get their vehicles fixed. And I'll just tell the story again, that you know, we, even small amounts of money make a big difference. We had a couple of instances where somebody on my own staff, out of their pocket, gave $50 here, $100 there, to individuals who needed parts for their car, their RV. And as a result of that, we're able to get their vehicles working, and were able to then find other places to go. And so it's a really important element, and I just want to highlight that element in your memo, that we have some city resources available to help people with those needs in addition to a place to park. So I appreciate that that's there. I don't know if I want to comment or if any.
I would just comment that we completely agree that those resources, that flexible financial support is really important, and it's a resource that we ensure exists at our two planned safe parking sites, but would definitely be needed at any future safe parking sites.
All right. Well, I'm happy to support moving forward with staff recommendation and the motion on the floor, and look forward to expeditiously finding a site in District 4 for RV parking, so we can begin to make progress on this issue. Thanks.
Thanks, Councilmember. I want to just say, first of all, I want to thank the folks that came out and spoke on this issue. But particularly, I want to, you know, thank you, Omar, and the whole staff for working with my office and D9, in terms of coming up with a strategy and, you know, path forward. My natural instinct is to see problems, solve problems. And I'm reminded by my wife and my daughter, and sometimes Gail Osmer, that I need to stop and listen and think it through. And I appreciate, you know, working with you and your team to really step back and have a vision and a strategy moving forward to address the problem that's not working for our residents, and it's not working for the individuals that are in these RVs. I know that you, just benchmarking with several cities, did you look at what they're doing in San Francisco in their safe parking program?
We weren't able to connect with the folks that are running that now. I'm not sure if housing has done that in prior times.
We haven't had recent meetings with San Francisco about safe parking.
Okay. The reason why I ask that question is, I had the opportunity to do a tour of their safe parking site near Candlestick. And they're doing a tremendous job in terms of taking a site that, it was just a parking lot, and there weren't a lot of utilities or facilities on that site. And they were able to move a significant number of RVs that were both running and not running onto that site. And they were pretty creative in terms of bringing in power through solar, as well as creating, you know, putting up porta potties and temporary structures to support those residents. And then they partnered with a nonprofit that is-
City facilities, et cetera. I know we've done some looking, but whether those are underutilized, you know, parking spaces and things like that, I think there may be other opportunities to even further move the ball forward on locations.
That'd be great. And then there was a discussion on parallel efforts or parallel tracks. So as we do this analysis and these surveys, we identify, we talk to a resident of the RV, we identify their issues or needs. Will there be immediate action that can be taken, if there's a solution, an immediate solution, or is it just data gathering in the initial phase?
That's a good question. I think ideally, if we encounter someone who is in need of a resource right then and there, we'd like to be able to offer it. And also, one of the things we've talked about is, the survey could also be a mechanism to enroll people in other things, like our Cash for Trash program, or our SJ Bridge program. But we're still sort of designing with the Lived Experience Advisory Board what the actual survey and logistics will look like.
Okay, I think that'd be a great opportunity. Obviously, real time. Obviously, real time, if we're interacting with the individual, and we can specifically identify their needs, and there's a solution available, that, you know, we should take advantage of that opportunity.
Councilmember, the one thing I would just make note of in terms of that process of gathering the information, we know that the Benioff Center, which is one of the entities that we spent some time with to try to understand, there's statewide, unsheltered census, when they came out and trained people and interviewed people in encampments and ravines and riverbeds, et cetera, was that the people that they're training to get information about the scope of somebody's needs, there's a, there's a, like a diminishing return or a balancing act between getting that information and providing others. So just know that it's something we'll work through, but it's a consideration along the way.
That's it. Again, thanks for all the hard work and working to put this vision together and path forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Jimenez?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. First and foremost, thank you for the report. Super extensive, like 500 pages, I'm kidding, by the way, but there was a lot there, and it took a while to digest it all and go through it. And I know a lot of it was some of the reports from the other, from some of the folks you were scoping out to figure out with, how they were doing things. Appreciate it. The first thing I just want to say is that, something stood out to me that I would like offline if possible, there was mention of racial equity issues related to the BI Spadat. It's the first I had heard of that, so I was curious if you can help at some point, whether, if you think it's appropriate now, feel free to talk about it, but if not, I'd like something offline, just to better understand what that is.
So I'd say, we'd be happy to set up some time. There's been several sort of studies across the nation about the, some of the issues around the assessment. In fact, this system, and I think is reexamining the assessment process as well, and understanding, it's one of the frankly leaders in trying to make sure that there's equity, the supportive housing system here. So yeah, I'd be happy to do it. We could do a deep research.
Okay, very, very good, very good. The other thing I was wondering was, so I know in the report, there was talk of some of the issues with trying to repair some of the RVs onsite, or even getting them to some of the mechanics who seemed to be flaking. It seemed in the report that some of them were, it was challenging to get mechanics that were actually going out there and doing some of the work. What I'm curious about is, have we ever considered, because I know we do work in, say, for example, the central service yard on fire trucks, for example, and I'm sure they use large lifts and other things of that nature, and I'm curious if we've ever explored or thought about utilizing some of the existing city infrastructure to help sort of create a space where some of those RVs could be repaired?
So we actually used a city mechanic in an emergency situation at Guadalupe Gardens. The city manager's office was actually very helpful in making a mechanic available to help in one particular instance. We've talked about, can we scale that and do something a bit larger? So it is something we're considering in the future, but at the same time, I don't think we have a ton of, you know, city mechanics that have a lot of time as well. So it would definitely need to be balanced.
Yeah, I guess I'm just curious, like, as an example, if we had a mechanic that didn't want to go out to Columbus Park or wherever it may be, and maybe they couldn't even fix this in their own shop, that we, and this is just an idea, I'm throwing things out and spitballing here, that we maybe open up the shop in the city yard for them to utilize to then make those repairs. Anyway, just throwing that out there for you to think about.
Councilmember, it's a great question. I will just say that among the many things that our team of departments has been trying to evaluate on a second pass, I think actually already evaluated once, is something along those lines. What do we have in our sort of systemic inventory that might be available for these types of things, whether that's any of these pieces?
Okay, and then I know something that was mentioned, I think during closed session today, but it's, I can say it openly, is just, I think there's an interest of me, and I suspect other councilmembers, better understanding the infrastructure necessary to help sort of offload some of the bio- waste and stuff from RVs, and I'm ignorant as to exactly what that takes and what it looks like, so better understanding that, so that way we can play around with some ideas as to what the potentials are, I think, it'd be great.
Thank you for that, Councilmember Jimenez, and I think as part of our return, being able to supply that detail, it makes sense in the context of budgeting, right? How much is it actually going to cost? Well, some of that's going to be us sharing with you what it actually means, like what we have to physically create. So I think that's really smart.
Yeah. The other thing I was going to ask you is, and the reporter talked about the city of Redwood City, that they saw, I don't know, I don't remember the exact language, but they, I think in the report, it said they saw reduction RVs in their city, but it wasn't, we weren't, they weren't sure if they were, it was because the program was a fact, or because the RV simply left.
Yeah, Councilmember, that's, it's a great point that you highlight, right? Because part of what the city may not want, may not want to do is to create the type of path that essentially just pushes people from where they are into a neighbor. We don't want neighbors pushing people, we don't want people being pushed, period, right? But we certainly don't want people being pushed across boundary lines. And when we spoke with the staff there at Redwood City, they had, they knew that some of the people had gotten into permanent housing, which is, of course, the goal for everybody that we can, but they did not know, for some folks, really, whether they just picked up and went across the line.
Right, and the reason I ask that is, I assume maybe the second pass, or as you continue to analyze this, I'm sure that's probably going to be part of the analysis consideration, how we effectively monitor and really measure whether we're being successful or not. Is that something here?
Yeah, it's really important, the notion of having baselines, which is part of what the census and sample is about, and then designing metrics, whether that's related to permanent housing for folks where we have that piece, or even frankly, the quality of the interactions. A lot of times, we don't actually design for, what are the people who are experiencing homelessness in their RVs? What's their experience of working with the staff that they're working with, and what impact does that have on them moving to the next step? And so we really want to be thoughtful, urgent, and working expeditiously, but thoughtful about those types of points.
Okay, and then the other thing that came to mind as I was reading this is, obviously, well, before I ask that, let me ask you, before I give you my statement, let me ask a question, is, do we have a sense in the city of San Jose, how many RVs are from outside of San Jose?
We don't.
I suspect that's what the answer is going to be, because it's difficult, right? I mean, how do you track? And so that brings me to what I was going to mention and ask about, is, do you envision in the further analysis that you're going to do, that the exploration may be a regional approach to this, where the cities, you know, if there's some sort of permit that can be given to RVs that are sort of moving around the county, and then by which we can track and, not track and monitor in the negative sense, but just, you know, be able to follow folks along their path to getting, you know, a home.
Councilmember, I think one of the benefits of the region having the community plan to end homelessness, the city of San Jose having signed on and working currently towards an implementation plan, is the ability to have regional partners so that we could design a shared approach that doesn't create those cross-boundary issues that we were just talking about. So I think there's some real opportunity there.
Yeah, because I personally, the cross-boundary issues are inevitable. We don't, we don't, we're not building a wall around the city of San Jose, Mountain View's not building a wall, people are, should be free to move where they like, right? And that's what naturally happens, and so I just think that we need to start thinking a little bit more regionally about the issue. The last question I have is, you lifted up in the report, Mountain View is a good example of a city that essentially said, "We're going to tell you where you can go." And then it was easier to sort of focus services and such, and so, and this may be stretching maybe into the next conversation of the other item, but do you think that's worth exploring as it relates to encampments as well?
So what I'll say about the reference that you just made to Mountain View, what we tried to do is to provide a sort of an unbiased picture of various other jurisdictions. So we weren't trying to raise up Mountain View or put down some other place, but just give you all as the elected leaders of our city a chance to say, "Well, what do we think?" And what Mountain View did is they had a handy map that says, "Here's where you're allowed to be," which made it easy for folks not to constantly being, you know, going from place to place and being moved around. I think that it's a discussion of this body in the context of enhancing the quality of life for all residents, whether those residents are housed or unhoused, and what might make sense for us as a city, whether that goes forward. I think as staff, our commitment is to make sure that we do the deep work to provide people with opportunities to get housed, to prevent them from becoming homeless. So hopefully, we'll have some more of that conversation as we get to the next item.
Okay, all right, that's all I have, but thank you so much for the information. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Other members of the council like to speak?
I just had a few questions myself. First, I want to echo the gratitude that was offered by Councilmember Cohen, and I appreciate very much both the courage and the willingness to share constructively how we can be better in our city and serving our many unhoused residents. And thank you all for coming forward. In particular, I want to note for the record Patricia's offer of a willingness to volunteer help clean up, I will come back to that point, I know in the future that will come up, not necessarily for Patricia specifically, but because I think there's an enormous amount of human potential that we're overlooking, not intentionally, of course, but by virtue of the crisis that we're in. I wanted to go back a bit to Councilmember Jimenez's questions, I think it was an important one around recognizing where people are coming from and recognizing the need for regional I know there's probably no legal basis for doing so, but it sure would be nice if we could come together with cities around some common agreement, perhaps prodded by the county, to say that those cities that are actually going to be building locations and providing locations for others to be able to stay, could in fact receive resources from those cities that are not stepping up to do so, so that we could have more resources to serve many unhoused in our county. And so I just want to confirm that through the survey process, are we going to be identifying where people were last housed, or, okay, we are, great. That's helpful, thank you, Reagan. And in terms of, obviously, you know, the VTA lot is a start, we need much more, but as we're placing residents in RVs in these locations, are we going to be restricted somehow by the continuum of care for prioritization, or can we ensure that our residents are the ones who get placed?
For our shelters, basically, and safe parking kind of acts like a shelter, including our emergency interim housing, those types of programs are not coordinated entry, they are referrals based on the city's priorities.
Okay, that's helpful, too. And then I wanted to ask about a couple of opportunities, I'm sure you guys have fielded a million ideas, and you always have more ideas than you do have resources, but I wanted to offer just two, and just explore a little bit the thinking around it. Have we considered maybe partnering, and I'm guessing I could persuade some brokers to offer their time as volunteers to this effort? Folks who are office brokers out there, who are clearly able to identify Class B, Class C office buildings that are vacant now and are probably going to be vacant for a really long time, because, let's face it, nationally, we're going into what is probably going to be the deepest fall in the office market in decades. I'm seeing reports of valuations dropping by 40% or more, that's prediction of the next several months. So we know we've got a lot of office vacancy, it's going to get worse, and there's going to be a lot of offices out there with large parking lots that are not going to be filled for a long time. And gee, wouldn't it be nice, let's say, in imaginary world where we had the money and the bonds, some sort, for example, to acquire sites as these office builders or office owners are really hurting, perhaps we could repurpose the parking lots and so forth, and then sell as the economy's coming back, or lease, however it would work. Have we engaged much with folks in the broker community, maybe identify those sites?
It's a great question, and I think, again, this is something that actually came up at Rules, it might have been you that brought it up in the Rules Committee, I can't remember now.
It wasn't me, because I wasn't there.
Okay, maybe Councilmember Mahan. The notion of essentially getting brokers, and if you've got some, please, we have had a few conversations where folks have reached out and said, "We're frustrated," but I would say this to the elected leadership, to the members of the public, to people watching, we desperately need willing participants. It is the single biggest roadblock. I mean, don't get me wrong, at about 1.6 million a site for 45 RVs, it's, we need to do some work around ways that we might be able to shape costs a little bit there, and there may be some strategic ways to do that, but as a threshold matter, if you can get brokers to volunteer, if we can get folks legitimately interested, maybe we can put together a package of, you know, we make sure your property is going to go back to exactly the case it was in if it's a lease. Caltrans has something like that in their agreements with us. So there's precedent, but the challenge is really having the willing participants who understand that part of our solution, which, again, we all understand ultimately permanent homes, but in this context, it would be great. So we've had a couple, and we're still having some of those conversations, but could always use more.
Okay, good to know. So hold me to it in the next 72 hours, so I can get you some names.
And careful what you ask for, Mr. Mayor.
I know you will. Thank you, Omar. The second idea, and I promise I'll stop here, is with streets. And I'm not thinking of streets that go through neighborhoods, we know there'd be plenty of challenges simply repurposing streets, but there are streets that go through less frequented parts of our city, where literally we could close them and probably not be missed much, and simply use those paved streets as locations, you know, frankly, as we were in the airport approach area in Guadalupe Park, and hopefully, because they're paved, be more, be easier for us to be able to get some basic services there. And I'm thinking very abstractly here about, for example, Coyote Valley, for example, where there are streets that were built with taxes that were levied, or fees, I guess, that were levied way back in the 90s, when everybody thought we were going to build an Apple campus, or a couple other companies down there tandem. And so have we considered simply closing some city streets and repurposing those?
So for something like that, we have a Department of Transportation that we would need to just go back and really spend some time evaluating, there's all manner of implications potentially to transportation, police, et cetera, but I'll take that information and make sure that we circle back with our transportation folks.
Okay, I know, yeah, happy to take that offline. I have a few ideas, and I won't share them all on the dice. All right, Councilmember Cohen.
Yeah, you just triggered a thought, based on a presentation I went to at the League of Cities Conference this year. You mentioned, Mayor, the idea of cross-jurisdictional pacts or collaboration. Obviously, I prefer the pact collaboration approach rather than the, like the carrot approach rather than the stick approach. I mean, I don't think we ought to be saying to our neighbors, you know, "You have to, you know, we're going to punish you, we're going to go to court, we're going to try to, you know, extract fees." But Orange County, and you probably are aware of this, half of Orange County, the neighboring cities have created a collective to deal with the homeless problem collectively, and they have actually, as a result, built joint shelters and actually then can use joint resources to move people and figure out where they should be. It's a little different because, you know, in our county, we are the big beast, and there's a lot of little cities, and in that area, it's a lot of cities that are all the same size. So I understand that it's a little more difficult to manage, but I just wanted to bring that up, that it's been done with a collaborative, and maybe it's something that, if you haven't yet, that you should look into and talk. I was only there for one hour, I can't speak to the details of how it exactly worked, but it's been working there, at least the way they present it, it's been working there.
Councilmember Cohen, so in my prior role, there's a lot of things that San Jose is frankly doing, that San Jose and Santa Clara County are doing exceedingly well. I will mention, though, in my previous job at San Diego County, we actually talked to the folks that did that North Orange County memorandum, and put similar versions in place in three sub-areas at the, in the county level down there for North County, the way it's set up, which is just to say, it is something that cities, at least all the city managers in that region were game for. I think the proper vehicle would be probably going back to our, we have a community plan to end homelessness and a good table for that, and so we'd just work with them, but I think it's a good thing to raise, and so we'll talk to the Housing Department and figure out the best.
See what we can learn from them potentially. And I'll just mention, I think it was from our office that you heard the conversation about broker real estate. We had a person that talked to our office who said, you know, "I have some properties that may be possible, and I'm willing to help you look for others." So we've had that conversation, but I think there's people out there who would be willing to help in that regard, so that's it.
Great, thank you. Okay, any other comments? If not, then I think we need, oh, we have a motion from Councilmember Esparza, let's vote on that motion.
Jimenez?
Aye.
Paralas?
Yes.
Cohen?
Aye.
Carrasco?
Davis?
Yes.
Esparza?
Yes.
Arenas?
Yes.
Foley?
Aye.
Mahan?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Locardo?
Aye.
Going back to Carrasco?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Onto the emergency housing system expansion, quick build, emergency interim housing. That's item 8.3. We have the presentation.
We do, and I'm just going to give our rest of our team a chance to get a little closer. Good afternoon, Mayor, council members, and members of the community. Just give us a second to get to the start of our presentation here. My name is Omar Passins. As I mentioned, I'm a deputy city manager with a focus on preventing and ending homelessness and managing its impacts and on improving quality of life for all San Jose residents. I'm joined today by my colleagues, Reagan Henninger, Deputy Director of the City's Housing Department, and John Cicirelli, Director of the City's Parks, Recreation, and Neighborhood Services Department, and Jim Orkball, Special Projects, also with the City Manager's Office. We are here to share an update about our ongoing work to improve our community with quality supportive emergency interim housing options known as quick build communities. These options give people individual space, their own bathroom, peace and dignity in a safe place while looking for a permanent home. Today, we are going to do three things. First, we will provide you with an update about ongoing efforts to meet the mayor and council's prior direction to identify sites in every city council district. Second, per that direction, we will also share the success of the program thus far and a preliminary assessment of shifting to specific groups or populations of unhoused neighbors based on their needs or other factors. Third, you also directed that the administration provide a plan for preserving and enhancing quality of life for all residents, including an analysis of potential enhanced services in areas around existing and future emergency interim housing and evaluating no encampment zones, which we present along with recommendations. As a preliminary matter, the mayor and council have directed a citywide approach. This approach is equitable for two reasons. First, it gives people who do not have shelter and are living outside an opportunity to get off the street in the community where they live rather than having to go to an unfamiliar part of the town for support. Second, as this map indicates, the current emergency system is most concentrated in specific parts of San Jose's districts 3, 6, and 7. Your direction to take a citywide approach also enables all parts of the city to take a shared approach to resolving street homelessness, while our region's supportive housing system continues to increase a menu of permanent housing alternatives and expand our prevention efforts. Today, per council direction, this shared approach focuses on two sites. In City Council District 4, staff previously submitted an information memo on September 9th to remove the prior Noble site from consideration. Working with the community, including over a dozen virtual and in-person community meetings, more than 100 emails and evaluating submissions from across the community and the city, staff has identified a new site owned by the Santa Clara Valley Transportation Authority, or VTA, at the southeast corner of Highway 237 and Zanker Road. In preparation for exploring the site, staff conducted an initial community meeting with mailers sent in three languages to residents over 1,000 feet from the project site. Initial meeting was held via Zoom on November 16th in conjunction with that council district four. Staff is in ongoing discussions with VTA representatives about the opportunities at the site and ensuring that, as has been true of all other emergency interim housing locations, any effort at the Saroni site would be a positive addition that is safe, secure, and supportive. Staff is recommending approval to proceed with the site, including further discussion with VTA and removing the Noble Avenue site from consideration. Staff were also directed to evaluate sites in Council District 10, where an initial site had previously been recommended at 85 and Great Oaks. As has been the case with every location, there was a mix of objection and support for most of the sites under consideration. During the reevaluation, staff solicited sites from the community, one of which was the VT-owned Cottle Road site pictured here, which came from an alternative site form process where we solicited input directly from members of the community. In community meetings, including one held on November 14th, members of the public shared their frustrations and, in many cases, opposition to not just the Cottle site, but any site in the district. As noted earlier in the presentation, placing this newest type of emergency housing with its high service mix, it creates an equitable opportunity for unhoused residents in this area, such as the nearby Blossom Hill, Cloverleaf, and Xander's Crossing, to gain access to a safe place to sleep in their own room while connecting to services. The original recommended site has become much less feasible than it was originally. Staff has begun conversations with VTA staff about the Cottle Road site and is recommending that council approve moving forward with this site. Staff continues to move forward based on mayor and council direction that these new emergency interim housing sites be located in each community, and the sites are proving to be the positive additions to the communities in which they are located. They are good neighbors now. The sites are clean, quiet, and well-maintained. They are supportive for people in search of permanence, excuse me, search of permanence, and they are safe places to rest, get connected to services, and healthcare, and job opportunities. Now, I'd like to turn the presentation over to Reagan Henninger, Deputy Director for Housing, to address council direction related to the success of the EIH program and evaluation of sub-populations. Reagan?
Thanks, Omar. The 2022 homeless census found almost 7,000 homeless people in San Jose. This is a 9% increase from the 2019 count. At the same time, San Jose saw a decrease in individuals experiencing homelessness who were living outdoors, with a 2% decrease in unsheltered homelessness. This trend matches or coincides with our increase in sheltered individuals in San Jose and countywide, as the city and jurisdictions across the county have expanded interim housing and temporary shelter by 25% in the last three years. The community plan to end homelessness sets aggressive targets to end and prevent homelessness. The plan has a goal of doubling temporary housing and shelter capacity to reduce the number of people sleeping outside. We attribute much of the decrease in unsheltered homelessness in San Jose to our interim housing programs. We've opened five interim housing communities since 2019. These interim housing communities have a capacity of nearly 400 beds. We've also added capacity through our project Home Key sites and expansion of our Motel voucher program. We will get to our goal of 1,000 interim beds. Since 2020, when the city first opened its interim housing site, the sites have collectively served 1,157 people, with 69% of them moving on to permanent or other transitional housing. Interim housing really helps fill a gap for people as they are healing and stabilizing and finding their own path to permanent housing. And I will note that our city interim housing communities are performing better than most shelters in our regional system of care, where the benchmark goal for moving people from emergency shelter to permanent housing is 32%. You can see our interim housing communities are performing at a higher standard. So the Housing Department is working with a consultancy firm, Homebase, to study our interim housing, and the study will identify models that reduce operation and service costs, engage residents in the governance and operations of their own communities, and move participants into permanent housing. Right now, our EIH and BHC communities serve a variety of individuals with a range of abilities and disabilities, and referrals come from multiple points, including from our street outreach teams, who are referring individuals from nearby encampments, as well as from the city's employment programs. The Homebase study that we'll be bringing forward in early next year will recommend serving specific sub-populations of the homeless community at our interim housing sites as a strategy to reduce the overall operating costs. So for example, a site that maybe is serving employment-ready individuals or individuals who are enrolled in, for example, rapid rehousing or San Jose Bridge program, theoretically, at those sites, you could have a lower case management ratio because those individuals need a lower level of care. The trade-off is that some flexibility in referrals to our EIH sites could be lost, like that neighborhood preference. But we will be bringing to council in February specific recommendations for sub-populations for our interim housing communities. I'm going to pass it over to John.
Thank you, Reagan. So I'm going to talk about the neighborhood surrounding where we're looking at putting this type of housing. And I want to be sure that we're letting you know the premise we start from, which is that this type of housing improves the quality of life for everybody, right? It gets people off the street. There are fewer public concerns as a result, and it's sort of a calm in the storm for the residents in order to start to reintegrate with society. When we talk with residents, of course, we hear their concerns. We're worried that more encampments will show up, RVs will surround the area, increase crime, blight, graffiti, dumping. All of these things are valid things to be worried about when we're talking about this population, but we started looking at the data. And so this data shows the five sites we do have currently in the city, and the dashed white line is the year before those sites were opened, and the yellow line is the year after. And this particular slide is about calls for service to the police department about what we're calling quality of life calls. So those are things like theft. Those are things like drug possession. Those are things like assaults and being under the influence and so on. As you can see, in all cases but one, those types of calls actually went down in the year after the site was open. Mayberry, in particular, the spike is largely related to disturbance calls. So again, they're not thefts, they're not assaults, it's loud noise or people making too much noise. We also looked at another grave concern of the community, which is fires. We hear this a lot around encampments. So these are the calls for response to fires by the fire department at the same five sites, and you can see it's the same general result. Pretty much, all those calls go down in nature once the site is opened. I will, though, add that the calls for service for medical needs do tend to go up. So the EMS needs go up, but that's not surprising, given the population that's being served, and that they're just coming off the street, in many cases from years and years of hardship, that they might have more medical needs than others. And that's why part of our recommendation is about exploring the ability to bring more medical services to these sites so that we can meet that need. So our recommendation around the neighborhoods around these sites is to do proactive case management and outreach to anybody who might be around the site. Quick response to any type of blight or dumping, vehicle abatement issues, trash service on a routine basis. We would also recommend creating a liaison so that each community has someone to talk to that knows what's going on, knows who to call to make sure something gets taken care of, if something suspicious is going on, or something is happening, or something has shown up today. We would also recommend that, as a result of these kind of budget adds, that we would more actively patrol the area just looking for things so that we can be sure that we're staying on top of it. That includes not just the five sites I showed you, but up to five new sites and up to two safe parking sites. And we'll talk about the cost of that in a minute. But the idea is to be able to respond promptly to these types of quality of life issues. Notably, we are not recommending at this time to create a no-encampment zone around these sites. We are looking at, like I said, the enhanced services, but we did add alternatives because we do hear that there is an interest in creating no-encampment zones. We do hear that there's an interest in higher levels of safety. So the first one at the top, you can see, that's our recommendation. That's about $2.5 million annually. The second one is an alternative, really looks at more of the public safety issues. So this would add code enforcement personnel, this would add police personnel, this would add cameras, this would add hygiene to any encampments in the area. This is a very high-cost one, given all the personnel and ads that would be involved, and it's about twice as much at 5.1 million, we're estimating. And then the last alternative is, we did look at creating a small no-encampment zone at 150 feet around the site. We chose 150 feet because that's what we currently do for schools, and so we wanted to be consistent and just take a look at what that might be. You can see the cost is less. It would also mean there would also need to be dedicated police because we would need to abate potentially. We would create things like no parking zones, or at least no overnight parking zones, but understand that in neighborhoods where that would be done, that would mean the residents that live there also wouldn't be able to park during those hours or in those zones so that there's impact beyond just worrying about RVs or cars. And we would have to add enforcement to make sure that happened. So why aren't we recommending a no-encampment zone? Well, if you've been around this business a while, as we have, what you realize is that abatement on its own really doesn't solve many problems at all. It moves problems, and we're pretty good at that when we abate. It costs money, for sure. It creates trauma for the people who were forcing to move, and we would likely have to look at things like some ordinance changes and things like that, which is not impossible to do, but likely we'd have to do some legal work to be able to create these types of zones. Now, a no-encampment zone does not equal a no-abatement zone. We would still be able to abate in any of these areas, just like we can abate in any of the other areas of the city, for the same reasons we might abate in other areas of the city: safety risks, dangers, problematic, people who aren't cooperating with what we're asking them to do. All those kinds of things would still be in play and still be at our disposal without using a no-encampment zone. So this is an example of what we're looking at. So our recommendation is what we're calling a 10-minute walk shed. So basically, how far you can walk in about 10 minutes? That's about a half mile for an average able person. A lot of people want to sort of take a point and draw a line and say, "Well, draw a half-mile radius and make a circle." We're not recommending that because every neighborhood is unique, and here's a great example. Here's a site we have that's been there now for a couple of years, and that's in the brown triangle at the top, and you can see that's at the intersection of 101 and 280 in the southwest side of that intersection. So when we look at that, rather than just draw a big circle, we want to look at the unique nature of the neighborhood and make sure we're serving that neighborhood, the streets of that neighborhood. You know, this particular area actually has a lot of commercial industrial kind of stuff, so it wouldn't have the same needs if we had any age right adjacent to a neighborhood. So we use this 10-minute walk in planning, even in my parks department, we use it when we look at how close people are to a park, where we're trying to decide if we need more parks in a certain area of the city. So again, that's the reason why we chose it. I want to give you a quick example of what I talked about earlier, which is encampments attracting, or, I'm sorry, these sites, these housing sites attracting encampments or RVs. So in this example, you can see, same site, these people, let's say these folks are all moved in, and we take a hard line and say, "No encampments, half mile." Then it starts to look like this. So we certainly protected the area, and we put a lot of resources into protecting that area, but we really didn't solve the problem here. We just moved it, and you can see, and we've actually had this experience in this area in the past, where we tried to track and follow and see where people would land when we pushed them out of an area, and this is basically what happened. So for us... So for us, it makes more sense to try to manage it where it is, and when it's not manageable, then yes, the option of abatement makes sense. But where people will cooperate and where we can get them to follow the rules of keeping the encampment clean into a small footprint, participating in programs like Cash for Trash and so on, we believe that we can manage these issues of concern with the community without creating a no-encampment zone. I have a video to show you. I want you to take a look at what one of these sites look like. So this site is a site that was built by our city, funded by our city, is operated by one of our operators who we also fund. There's a gentleman in here you're going to hear from named Chris. Chris is a recent participant. And I know there's a lot of controversy that gets around where these sites are going to be and what the impacts are going to be on the neighborhood. But I want to talk a little bit about what these sites really do for the people that are in them. And even though Chris never uses the word "hope," I am certain that when you hear him speak and you look in his eyes, you will see he is hopeful. I am certain you will also see that he's starting to feel like he belongs back in the community. His story is not an easy one, like many, but these opportunities are created by these types of housing and these types of programs. And these success stories happen all the time in our city, and they're very meaningful. And so let's see some of this magic. Thanks.
My name is Chris, Christopher Henderson. I'm about Chris. Before I came to Home First, I was homeless in the throes of addiction. Home First had a lot of services that helped me. They had drug counseling, therapy, housing, resumes, interviews, mock interviews. But most of all, like, they listen, like, that's the best thing they do is listen. Like, they offer any service you can think of, like, think of the hole you're in, think of all the ways you can get out. And I'm pretty sure they know how all them ways work.
Back up. I'll just conclude quickly with our summary of our recommendations. We're recommending removing Noble Site from consideration for interim housing. We're recommending, as Omar spoke about, to continue to pursue the VTA sites of Serrone and Cottle, while continuing to look at other identified sites and pursue those. We're looking to implement a subpopulation focus at the housing sites based on level of care needed. And then, as I was talking about, as part of our budget process coming up, look at the proactive management for outreach of homeless cases, expedite things like dumping and vehicle abatement and other issues of concern, and create an accountability or monitoring dashboard that the public can see that we keep updated on a monthly basis about what kind of calls for service are we getting, how quickly are we getting to resolve them, and what's going on in the community. So with that, I turn it back to you for questions and comments. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Thank you, John. Thank you, Omar, Reagan, Jim, Olympia, Andrea, everybody's been working so hard on this really important mission. I think this is the most important thing we're doing in the city right now, so thank you. I know we're about to go to public comment. I just wanted to offer one quick set of observations. Because I often say I feel blessed to be serving a city and a community like this one, and that really came home to me in the last few days. This morning, I was on the phone with two executives at Cisco, which we know has been really a leading light in terms of encouraging more corporate responsibility to step up to address homelessness. And it was Fran Katsoudis, who's the senior vice president there, and Michelle Wright. And I said, "Look, we're looking very seriously at building, quick-build community right on your property line, right there at the Serrone rail yard." And I expected to hear concerns, but Fran immediately jumped in and said, "Well, I've been down to Evans Lane, it looks really wonderful, and I love what you guys are doing with the families, and we look forward to seeing how we can be great partners." Last week, I was at that same community at Evans Lane, which is one of the ones, I think, that was featured here, for holiday celebration, for a meal with the families. And along with us was Jim Stump, who offered at cost to bring all the food, at very low cost. And then we had donated from Nirvana Soul, the owners of that coffee shop at Bianca Ashlu and Veronica Macy donated coffee and treats for all the kids. And then we had various members of the Cathedral Faith who were there, along with Peter and Zanapow. And it was just so obvious that the entire community had embraced this housing community and the people who were in it. And what, it dawned on me is that there's clearly, it's a blessing to live in a community where people embrace communities like what we're trying to build, and they step up in various ways to say, "How can we be part of the solution?" And that's a testament to the great work that staff has done, and it's a testament to the great community we have. I just wanted to ask if you could show one slide. Omar, I may have missed it at the beginning, but I think you had a slide that described the distribution of Mercy Housing throughout our city.
I believe it's slide three, if we could pull it back up.
Could we put that back up?
And this is, Mr. Mayor, while they're pulling it up, to be clear, this comes from the, the federal government requires a housing inventory count be done? And it is all emergency and transitional units in the region? So I just want to make sure we're talking about that.
These are all the units we have that are serving people who have been living on the street.
That's correct, on an emergency or transitional basis, as opposed to permanent housing.
Okay. I think this is a very important map because it reinforces what I think we've long known, which is the highest concentration by far of projects of housing to help our unhoused residents in Central San Jose. It's predominantly District 3, District 6, and District 7. And I know a little bit about that because I live in District 3, and I'm grateful that we have a council member in District 3, and Ralph Fraz has been a great champion for building housing for unhoused. But I think it's important for everyone to see where communities are really stepping up and serving, because I think there is a misperception by some that their community may or may not be disproportionately impacted or burdened. And I think we recognize we can do a much better job of continuing to distribute these kinds of services and communities throughout our city. But clearly, it is overwhelmingly in Central San Jose where we're seeing that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I did want to let you know and let everyone watching know that the Office of Supportive Housing for the County actually puts this data every year on their site. Like, any member of the public could just go there and pull in a year to verify the data if they want to check. So just wanted you to know that this is pretty accessible information.
That's helpful. Thank you, Omar. Okay, with that, I know we have many members of the community who'd like to speak, so let's go to the public.
Okay, I'm going to call three to four names at a time. When you hear your name, please come forward. First person to the microphone, just go straight to the microphone, even if you weren't the first name called. The rest of you line up down the middle. I have Derek Morris, Isaac Keo, Richard Pham. Oh, and please say your first name when you get to the microphone so we know if you've spoken, and we can just put your card aside when you're done. So again, that's Derek Morris, Isaac Keo, Richard Pham, and I'll also add Wei Jiang Jiang. And you're not allowed to bring large signs down to the podium. Okay, can I have the first speaker go to the microphone while the other people talk with the security guard? You can give that to me. Or you can also give him a copy to show up on the screen. I need somebody to come to the microphone. Are you using this graphic?
No.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Mayor Ricardo, Mayor Lek Mahan, council members, thanks for giving us an opportunity to express our concerns regarding to decision to install EIH on our Cottle VTA site. First of all, let me introduce myself. I'm a resident, I'm a regular VTA user. Cottle VTA is what I used before pandemic, every day, go to work and back from work. Not only that, I met a lot of people, students, also using the same thing. And I met park-and-ride people using that location as a carpooling, buses. So everybody using this station before pandemic is fully packed, okay? So that's why, if the decision by installing VTA site in the Cottle VTA parking lot, it will desert the current and the future public transportation usage. And it is a direct contradiction to this authority. VTA authority statement said, quote-unquote, "Solutions that move you." Because that is the case, and I feel that was good for us, not only me, but all the friends and neighbors up there, they're also using VTA, and their children also use VTA. So why do we say this is a bad decision? Because, first of all, let's be reminded, Cottle VTA station is built for public transportation, not EIH site, to begin with, okay? And if you look at the picture from the Google, the slope downward to the end is pretty bad, pretty steep, okay? And it's only about 3.5 acres, if I measure from Google site. The Cottle VTA was created for public transportation and served, like I said, as a park-and-ride location for all residents in that area. And including light rail system, carpooling, buses, for all people there, okay? And also businesses like Google.
Thank you. Next speaker. Next speaker, your time is up.
How much time do you have?
Two minutes.
Sir, I'm sorry, everyone receives two minutes because we're going to have several more items tonight. We're going to be here till midnight.
Okay, can I have one more?
No, you can't. Next, sir. Thank you.
All right, I want to start. First of all, my name is Isaac Keo. I'm a president of Association Palmyra. First of all, I oppose building the EIH at Cottle VTA Station. I want to start by saying that our communities hold no ill will towards the homeless, we just have an issue with the Cottle VTA location. As the picture is worth 1,000 words. As you see, most of these EIH, BHC, and Safe Parking are all within one and a half mile radius. And you see here, so one and a half mile radius of the city of San Jose has 64% of these projects. So there is unfair distribution. I want to mention a couple of these facilities. Omar is familiar with these, Rue Ferrari, Bernard Montre, Brana Montre, Santa Teresa Safe Parking, it just got approved recently. This is unfair distribution, Omar. The city of San Jose has to share the burden. And also, I'm going to say that even the site, Cottle Side, doesn't meet city guideline. It is not flat. And creating of such a site so close to a hospital is not in any good public health or safety sense. We have 200,000 people, patients use this site, 1,000 healthcare workers, nurses, and so forth. This site is in the middle of, Omar, in the middle of a big intersection where we have tens of thousands of units, houses, condos. This is the main intersection for us, including Kaiser, which has thousands. And this park is heavily used by our community. The presentation you presented showed the empty park. This is how it looks pre-COVID. Please do not share this kind of information.
Thank you. Next speaker. Also, Diane Wang. I would like everybody to hold their applause.
Here's the deal, we can't have applause and still hear people. We need to be able to hear members of the public. If you're going to applaud, we're going to ask you to leave because we need to hear from members of the public, and we need to move quickly because we're going to be here till midnight. Thank you, welcome, sir.
So VTA around there. First, I have to say, I'm really supporting your greater project, EIH, to help a lot of the homeless people, but...
Sir, please address the council, you're not to speak to staff, you're addressing the council.
I just want to appreciate that.
We can't hear you, you need to speak into the mic.
Okay. So I came here with the concerns of the site choice in the VTA, Cottle VTA for the EIH. The concerns about the safety. Although it's great for the project, but we do have some other side of the concerns, especially the safety of our nurses inside Kaiser Hospital. Here, so... So this is the nurse. This nurse was attacked by a homeless man. Got various, very horrific injuries. This is another, of 70 years old, the nurse. He even was, he was died after the attack by a homeless man. This is not a bias. And this is a study, study report, this is the fact. 75%, this study of the whole of the California population of the homeless population, 75% of them have mental illnesses. This is just a fact. I didn't want to say more about this. But we do recognize the concerns. Our nurses feel worried about this one. Of course, we should do the help of the people, homeless people, but we cannot sacrifice meanwhile, sacrifice others' safety. During this pandemic, three years, our nurses make extraordinary contribution to our society. They are saving the life, working hard there. At the same time, now, we put them into the more dangerous...
Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker. Also, I have only called one more person, I have two people in line. I don't believe I called your name. Ma'am, what's your name? Okay, I have not called your name yet. I'm going to go ahead and put you in, but if you don't hear your name, don't come down. Go ahead and come to the microphone. I'm also going to call a few more names. This is why I need you to not applaud so you can hear me call names. Diane Wang, Leonard Peruzzi, Grace Yu, and Ven Katesh. Please come on down. Go ahead.
I appreciate the opportunity, okay? VTA usage, as many other speakers spoken, were 100% utilized before the pandemic, okay? At that time, the new housing, the apartments where we have roughly 5,000 new homeowners moved in, after pandemic ends where employers are calling all of us back into the office, that utilization will go more than 100%. Please do look into that, okay? Kaiser being next door, as the gentleman said, it's a threat because we had multiple incidents where, you know, people were impacted. My own father-in-law were hit, he was thrown on the floor, we had to take him to the hospital, okay? So I understand homeless, we feel for them, but what are you thinking about us, the normal people, the taxpayers, who are paying $2.5 million for those homes? What is the security of the normal public? Okay? So I really would like all of you to think about what location really makes sense for us and for them. Right now, it makes sense for them, but not for us, okay? I really would like you to think about because we have selected you as trusting party that you will be looked after, our interest as well, which we don't see it today. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening, council. My name is Leonard Peruzzi. I reside in Palmyra. San Jose being the third biggest city in California with 180... San Jose being the third biggest city in California with 180 square miles of space. And we are putting two square miles, we're using two square miles to put 65-plus percent of the unhoused people in San Jose, which I don't believe it's fair. Cottle is a very overcrowded street. Kaiser is going to expand further. The light that turns from a couple of streets into Cottle currently takes more than three to four minutes in the morning and in the evening to turn. Green for people to go. And four intersections being on that same street, that's the main corridor to 85. It's going to be disastrous traffic. I don't think any surveys have been done, any traffic surveys. We had one fatality there just about two weeks ago. We had one four and a half months ago on Cottle Road, right next to Safeway. That area is just overbuilt with all the, with ascent apartments, VO apartments, Safeway, Target, everything coming in the past seven years. And now we want to add more. Please distribute, please put them in different spaces. We are not against anything, but we don't want them just in two square miles of city of San Jose, third biggest city in San Jose, California. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello, hello. Hi, my name is Diane Wang. Well, I'm here today, I'm not speaking for myself. I speak for my husband. He is not able to come in today. My husband is an engineer. He got permission to work from home for last two and a half years. However, he just received a notice from his employer that he needs to report to his office to work in downtown San Jose effective January 3, 2023. I'm sure that my husband is not the only one to be mandated to go to the office to work in January 2023. Before COVID crisis, he was using the Cottle Park and Ride every day to get to his workplace. There was no parking spot to be found if he arrive in the parking lot after 8:00 AM. That was how full that parking lot was. If you take three quarters away from the parking lot, where my husband and hundreds of others like him, where they going to park? To destroy this parking lot, to put some tiny homes in there, to me, that is like you dig a large hole on this side to patch a small hole on the other side. It's a terrible idea. It does not make any sense. Park and Ride, it's like two legs. You use two legs to walk. If you chop off one leg, how you going to walk? So it's not a function. So we need this parking lot, we need to use it. Please keep it for my husband and every others like him. Thank you.
I'd also like to call down Srini Vasan, I think is what it says. And then Sophia Song and Kunta Sai, or no, Tsai, T-S-A-I. Go ahead.
Hello, council members. My name is Grace Yu. I'm a student of political science at San Jose State and a resident of District 10. I believe this solution does not make sense, the Cottle VTA. I believe this does not contribute enough to our society and it has more negative impacts. The solution would not completely help the homeless either, or those who identify as homeless. The homeless need more complex forms of assistance and guidance and not simply a Band-Aid solution of housing. May I remind you about the history of 1950s Skid Row? The whole city became destroyed. I'm not discriminating against those who identify as homeless. However, they need guidance and they need more complex solutions than housing, simply. I believe that this is an irresponsible solution, putting the responsibility of the government into the hands of the people. This is your call and I believe this is unfair to the residents. I have a responsibility to protect my citizens, I'm sorry, myself, my neighbors. And as a young American citizen, I have a right and obligation to protect my neighbors and our country. I believe the solution is very short-sighted. It is missing the citizens and society's point of view. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening, mayor and the council members. I'm Ven Katesh. I'm a resident of the Palomesa and Palmyra community for the last eight years. Thank you for giving us this opportunity to talk to you. We have been deliberating, discussing this amongst the community over the past couple of months. And what we believe and with the facts that has been presented by our earlier speakers is that this is not the right location from our perspective. And there are various aspects that we have looked at before we come and talk to you. Unfortunately, while this assessment was being done, we have not been a part of that assessment. I think we have not been heard. And that is when I think we reached out and we have started talking to you people and talking to the administrative staff here. In the last eight years since I have lived here, I have seen the kind of increase in the traffic at this junction. And now you are looking at taking over an area, a parking lot of a public transport and putting up a housing there. In fact, this is a time when I think people have to be encouraged to use the public transport. And this by taking away the parking lot is going to impact that. And the traffic, the closeness to the Kaiser Hospital, the shopping and other areas that has come up there is going to exacerbate the challenges that we are already seeing over the past few years. Considering all these and many other points that I wish, I do not want to repeat due to the shortage of the time. Our humble request is that this has to be reconsidered. This has to be taken off from the list. And there has to be an equitable distribution of such sites across San Jose. San Jose is one of the largest areas, as my earlier speaker said, and there are places where it has to be. And the equitable distribution across the districts have to be looked at.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next speaker. Also Sundai Ramna, Maile and Lloyd Chow, please come down.
Hello, good afternoon. Appreciate the opportunity to speak here and thank you for listening to me. I want to add my two cents to all my neighbors here from my local, my community. We are really concerned about the location of the Cottle Road EIH. There are multiple aspects to this that don't seem to have been considered fully. Least of which is the safety aspect and then the traffic aspect. We heavily use the VTA station to commute to our work. If we lose the parking lot, I'm afraid we're going to see many more cars on Cottle. As it is, there's a lot of traffic on Cottle with all the development over the past few years. And on 101, 85, 87, you name it. Anything traveling north from there is completely choked. And if we add more, because we are disabling people from using VTA, it's just going to make the problem be worse, I'm afraid. That's one part of it. The second thing is the safety aspect. We seem to be pushing it under the carpet. I mean, there was some data presented here that seemed to suggest that the number of calls, fire and police calls were the same, if not less actually, from 2019. I'm afraid that's not an apples-to-apples comparison, right? If I just take the data from 2019 to now, how do we know what some other factor did not impact it? If I were to just pick some event that happened between 2019 and 2022 to show that the number of calls went less, COVID happened. I can claim it's COVID that's reducing the number of calls to police and fire. That would not be true, right? So I think we need to do more due diligence to exactly figure out what the impact of having something in a community that's so dense already, that has a Kaiser right next to it. There are so much traffic from all the ramps there from 85, so much development around it, so many apartment complexes, the Safeway Target malls, the many apartments that are right around there. All of these things have not been considered at all. We sincerely request you to please consider all these aspects and move the EIH from the Cottle Road VTA to a more appropriate location. Thank you.
And she's making her way down. I just want to check in with my colleagues. The plan was to take a break at 5:30 for dinner and then to come back in 30 minutes and continue to hear testimony. Is that acceptable? Any concerns?
Mayor, I believe we have a timed certain item at 6:00. What happens with that?
I think it trails.
Oh, it does? Automatically?
We've got a lot more testimony.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Yong Hong Song. Today, my topic is about safety.
They can't hear you, you need to speak at the microphone.
Away from Cottle VTA. So that EIH putting the children into more dangerous situation. And also this area live a lot of, is older community, live a lot of senior people there. Some even live there over 50 years. So for safety reason, I say no EIH in Cottle VTA. Another thing I want to talk about, I know this proposal only in one week, very short time. And most people know, I think, until yesterday. Even today, still a lot of neighbors do not know this proposal. So I strongly suggest to make decision, delay you make decision. Give all the council member more time to hear our community sound, to let you make right decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, my name is Heng Gong. I passed by the Cottle Road VTA every day for many years. First off, I want to thank you, VTA, for reaching out to the community, sharing the, you know, the development plan of building the high-density development. That was only five years ago, okay? So in August 2017. In that plan published, Cottle VTA is promised as a key enabler, right, to building the high-density community around. Among the key promises, right, are the increased job access, strengthen the transit, support the healthy, you know, walkable community. But now, the high-density village, the community is built. The muscle is built, but the heart, the Cottle VTA, is in danger, right? Building the EIH is like you blocking the artery to the heart and defeating the main purpose of that grand plan, right? Killing growth potential of the South San Jose community. So Cottle VTA area is already overloaded, right? For example, last year, we had, you know, four people shot near the VTA, the Cottle VTA area. Now, we just had a fatal car accident nearby this month. So there's definitely no margin for adding the proposed EIH, right? The 2017 plan, right, was a good example of two-way communication, but the EIH proposal was not. So the communities deserve sincere, clear communication. So Mayor Ricardo, right, pushed hard for transit and bicycling as a green alternative to automobiles, right? That's why I'm very green today. We all support that. But please let the Cottle VTA function. Let the kids continue to walk to school safely, bicycle to school safely along the Cottle, right? Give South San Jose a chance to grow. Do not ruin its potential. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Also, I have Kitty Tao, Helena Wang and Elizabeth.
Hello.
Go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Lloyd Chow, 50 years senior from Berriosa community. First, I like to, I'm happy we just finished a successful election. I'm happy for the result. Second, last six months, I have learned a lot from mayor and councilman, staff, working extremely hard, working on the homeless issue. Homeless also has a dignity, a human. So as a Berriosa noble park, I encourage council member vote approved, remove noble from the consideration for the homeless side, the EIH side. And then I think Berriosa community, they are very strong, very bonded. So as a senior and the younger generation coming up, we committed to help the San Jose council and mayor, the coming one, to work, resolve the issue. That's a big problem and we all need to work together. And I did see our mayor working at Martha's Kitchen, Cindy Chavez is working at Mobile, Milpitas Shower, helping the homeless people. They need help. We Berriosa committed to help as a coming mayor also, including the coming mayor, Mehan. But we can work together. But the Berriosa noble, we have to stay strong, healthy. We can help our city and our country. And thank you for the staff. Let's go.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello, good evening. My name is Ramesh Sander. I have been living in this area for about 22 years. Thank you for the opportunity to come here and talk about the issues that face the community. The people who have come here with me, I've known them for 20 years. Like I said, I lived here for about 22 years. We are compassionate, compassionate, tax-paying citizens who have worked really hard to build this community. We are not opposed to building an emergency housing for the unhoused, but we are opposed to giving, to building it in an area where it is largely concentrated in one place. We are not opposed to giving opportunities for unhoused, as we, as my other friends also said. We are opposed to having an EIH location in which, which will cause traffic congestion, which will create traffic issues for emergency vehicles, et cetera. We are not opposed to get unhoused on their feet, but we are opposed to having EIH in a place that is used by our community to access school and education. In a VTA parking lot, we all used to burn less fossil fuel. We are not opposed to providing safe places for unhoused, but we are opposed to having anything that makes us feel unsafe. Finally, we are not opposed to building a consensus on where the EIH should be built. But we are opposed to the fact that the community was not consulted before choosing this location and decisions are made for us. We are here to, you know, together to fight for a better future for our children and grandchildren. They will be visiting the VTA station for taking transportation through San Jose State and other places for educational purposes. And we feel that that VTA spot is vital for our community. Our kids and grandkids will be using it. So our request is for our city council and elected officials to support us by finding EIH location other than the Cottle VTA that is safe for the unhoused and safe for the tax-paying citizens. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Hello, dear council members. My name is Maile. I'm living in district number two. I'm behave my family to invite our strong opposition to the Cottle Road EIH site proposal. Our family member just heard this proposal three days ago. We didn't get any notice from San Jose City. Our committee had a meeting yesterday. Lots of laborhood views, concerns, objections and also questions are made in that meeting. So could you please check and review our feedback before you make the final decision? Second, the VTA station area is not a safe location for people to leave. There are six big intersections surrounding the VTA station in 0.2 miles. This is too many intersection for people to cross. Plus, the VTA public transportation access, it's very dangerous if we are increase the number of people to pass the crosswalks every day at the busy traffic location. Other than that, it also make more heavy traffic congestion. Have you considered that? You may assist in more tragedy, assist in more car accident if you vote yes to this crazy proposal. Can you be responsible for more tragedies? Please think about it. Third, there are also health concern for the homeless people if living there. Because that area is very close to the highway, have tried. Have the, have tried, if you, have you tried, all of you tried to walk in there? The air in there is very dusty and choking. It's not good. Let's make maybe.
Thank you.
Okay.
Next speaker.
Hi, my name is Kitty. I'm working in Kaiser Permanent Laboratory and I really strongly against EIH gonna build in Cottle Road. In the past, those homeless people sneak inside of the laboratory from the back door, go inside the lab, touching personal stuff, and sleeping in custodian's room and made lab is chaos. They left over pee-pee, poo-poo, trash, and every junk in the backyard, which make the people work there feel very paranoid and nervous. Other than that, this is gonna be directly impact of healthcare with the patient. Because when they open the incubator, we were collecting all the human disease, bone, marrow, cancer, leukemia blood. They're gonna mess up the case. And then that will be giving the patient wrong result, doctor with wrong diagnosis. Imagine if you or your family member got service from Kaiser, you got same result. Is that gonna interrupting you? Yes. So other than us, those homeless, if they touching those toxic biohazard, those blood, human cell, they can bring out, get the disease and then continuously contagious other. This is a very bad environment. We don't want to our city slide down that fast and also become very ghetto. We want to full, we want to peaceful mind to work this area, giving the good service for patient.
Thank you, next speaker. Also, I have LV, Derek Sanderlin, and Amy Chow. Come on down.
Hi, my name is Elizabeth and I'm a member of the Race Equity and Community Safety Committee with Sacred Heart Community Service. And I'm here today to speak on support of emergency interim housing, also to speak against the ban on encampments and also a ban on abatements. We don't need to further criminalize or traumatize people who are unhoused. They need our help, not hostility. And as a government, as city council members, you have a responsibility to protect and to assist all of the residents in our city, which includes our unhoused population. And so it's really important not to increase police or law enforcement patrolling the EIH areas. Instead, what could be, what could be done is to have folks who work there to be able to rove and monitor and to be able to help build rapport and help build connections of trust. Because if you're a person who has been unhoused and day after day, people walk past you and they don't care and they don't look at you, they don't offer you help, then they might be more distrusting of someone else offering them assistance. So we have to make sure that we, we provide people with necessary resources. So I'm against any encampment, against no encampment. I'm for no ban for encampments. Thank you.
Thank you, next speaker.
Hi, I'm here today in support of Council Cohen's memo to permanently remove the noble site from future development. The site is especially inappropriate for EIH development as it is directly across the street from multiple schools. Furthermore, this is not just an empty lot. It is a park which is frequently used by our dogs, children, and neighbors. I myself grew up going to the percolation ponds and now I am able to share that wonder with my one-year-old son. Standing in front of the percolation ponds, it is surely one of the most beautiful views in the city. Our neighbors have been filled with anxiety and distrust since the council stealthily approved this site in June. Please help restore our faith in the government by offering our park permanent protection. Thank you.
Thank you, next speaker. I've also called several names of people who haven't come down. Helena Wang, go ahead and come to the microphone. LV, Amy, I'm not sure who spoke last, and Derek Sanderlin. Also, Tina Olivia, come down, and Robert Aguirre. Go ahead.
Hello, thank you council for hearing me today. It's good to see you all. I just want to tell a quick story that I think encapsulates the difficulty of this conversation. Several years ago, I was lost in a city that wasn't my hometown with no money, no place to stay, and it was raining. I had to find shelter wherever I could because I had no hotel for the night. Every time I tried to find some sleep in the midst of mists brushing against my face, a police officer would come up to me and he would ask me to move. The same police officer asked me to move down an entire city block. This went on for an hour. When we wait, when we continue to, to push this issue and say, well, it can't be here and it can't be here, there's a human cost to it. It's not so simple as to talk about the aesthetics, but also talking about the humanity. I have a lot of friends and family, goddaughters, aunts, who have struggled with homelessness in this city. And I, along with a few of you who have already made comment, don't want to look back on what we've done in the city and feel ashamed of ourselves. I want us to feel like we were a part of a solution that benefited everyone and that is what the Housing Department's recommendation provides. Granted, I don't agree with car abatements, but I do, I do, I do want you to follow through with, with the recommendation that they brought forward. Thank you.
Next speaker. That's Robert.
How about those Niners? All right. My name is Robert Aguirre. I think most everybody here knows me and very glad to be back. It's been a while. But I'd like to address some of the things that people are talking about here. And they're talking about the number of people that are moving into their neighborhood, unhoused people that are already there. And I just happened to pull up on, on my phone in one zip code, 95119, which is where one of these sites is being located. In that area, in that zip code, there are 1,627 sex offenders registered. And if people are afraid of unhoused people doing something to them and they're afraid for their children, I think they should be more concerned about the 1,627 people in their own neighborhoods that are living in housing. The thing is that when you provide people with housing, it provides stability. And that stability is what allows people to recover from whatever got them to the place where they were that brought them to living in the streets. And we all suffer through something or another, that at one time another is going to put us in a position where we're going to have to do, be in someplace that we choose not to. Take the people in paradise that, that lost their housing as a result of the fires that took place there. All those people were unhoused. But let me tell you, the first people that responded to them was a group of people that I belong to. It was the Union of the Homeless that moved in and brought people tents and sleeping bags and offered them advice on how to live outdoors. If we were to have a major emergency here, the people that would know how to survive are the people that are outdoors. And we need to understand that they are part of our population, they're part of our society, they're part of our city. And we can't exclude them and treat them differently because they don't own a home or they don't, they can't afford to rent a home. They're people just like us and they have feelings just like us, they have families just like us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jasmine Ruschen Patel and Jason also come on down.
We'll hear from two more speakers and then we'll take a break.
Okay.
Good evening, council. My name is Albertina Oliva. I'm a San Jose native and I've been living in District 3 in downtown San Jose across from St. James Park for about two years. Of course, interim housing isn't the final solution, but in the meantime, that we build more affordable and low-income housing, interim housing is absolutely necessary. Some people said, think about the normal people. I just wanted to set the record straight that unhoused people are normal people, these are human beings, we are all the same. Those opposed to emergency housing are using fear tactics, so I just want to acknowledge that. This is an extremely unaffordable city and we must support everyone in it and not just people who own $2.5 million homes. People are using examples of violent unhoused people and this isn't always the case. I've lived in downtown, have walked the streets, walked at night, and I have not had my life threatened, I've not gone anything for my safety and when there were plenty of opportunities to do so. Interim housing helps us care for our most vulnerable neighbors and we need more housing, not criminalizing of the unhoused. Let's be reminded that those who are unhoused are families, are immigrants, are children, are working people that are contributing to the Silicon Valley, that are cleaning our streets, our offices, and that are our neighbors. Thank you.
And this is our last speaker. When the council goes to break, I'll talk to the rest of you. Go ahead.
Hello, so the mayor and the council members, so good afternoon. Yeah, I'm Helena Wang and I'm resident in the nearby the Cottle VTA station. So first of all, I want to ask, why are homeless people increase recent years very fast? So that is a political reason, I believe. The second, if we have those homeless people increased, we need how to keep those people in the safety place. But look at the map on our Cottle VTA station. That's the triangle. It's for the, look like the island. Those people in the island, it's not safety, it's not safe. Also, anyways, you put our home in a dangerous place. So we, my question is, we need to keep ours home safe, also for the protect our kids, protect our senior, protect our resident. Also, we need to protect the homeless people in safety place. Please stop this project, give us a good environment. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate the patience for everyone who's been waiting to speak. We have a very long evening meeting in front of us. We're going to take a quick break for a meal and we'll be back at this at 6 o'clock and we'll resume public testimony then with council decision. Thank you.
Okay, so for anybody who wants to go home and speak, who has submitted a card and you want to speak from home at the Zoom meeting, come meet me over here at the corner and I'll talk to you. If you're otherwise, if you're gonna stay.